So before we turn to the public testimony, Mayor Ryback would like to say some introductory comments and then we will hear very briefly from the Director of our Intergovernmental Relations Team, Mr. Ranieri, on the status of things at the Capitol. Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Glidden. It's really encouraging to see so many people here. I obviously support this proposal, but we'll have time for comments later. My role at the outset is just give a quick overview dispassionately about what the proposal is. We obviously rightfully have a lot of attention on the Vikings, but actually from our perspective, we've looked at this a little bit differently. We looked at this by saying that we, well, I certainly want the Vikings to stay. The proposal is really based on the idea that we have several facilities that are involved here. We have a Metrodome that has an uncertain future if we don't have the Vikings there. We have a Target Center that is currently on the city's property tax rolls and the city has a contractual obligation to upgrade it. And we have a convention center that currently doesn't have a solidified funding stream after 2020. Based on those ideas, we crafted a proposal that said that the state could continue to take part of the sales tax they impose in the city and use that for the stadium. In return, the city would, for the first time, have control over the hospitality taxes collected here. We then would be able to, in the bill, be able to use that for economic development, which I certainly believe we should use to pay for paying for that debt of Target Center, which would take it off the tax rolls and lower property taxes. The proposal is based on a 2% growth of sales taxes, which is a low for historic levels. It's not a level we've hit every year, but we've certainly gone beyond it in others. If there's an additional revenue stream, that would be controlled by the city of Minneapolis. And that's a very quick overview of what that is. This does not involve the use of property taxes. This does not involve raising sales taxes in the city. The dollars are all used as part of what happens after 2020 with the sales taxes. That's a very quick overview of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Ranieri, if you would please approach the podium and let us know what is the status of the bills at the Capitol.
Madam Chair, members, my name is Gene Ranieri. I'm the IGR Director for the City of Minneapolis. Both the House and Senate bills are moving. The House bill has a new file number, House File 1485. That was done last night. The bill is now on the floor of the House. The Senate bill, Senate File 2391. It passed out of the Jobs and Economic Development Committee today at 2:00. Both bills, and that's being sent to Finance Committee. Both bills, I would like to basically talk about two major items. Composition, how the MSA, Minnesota Stadium Authority, will operate. And then the local bill, Article 4. Article 4 is Convention Center amendments. What it includes are local approval of special amendments. This article would require local approval, and that's in both Articles, Section 4 in the House, Section 5 in the Senate. It would allow for economic development and capital projects. We have existing language in that Convention Center bill. It would be expanded in this bill. It's both in Section 2 of Article 4. Charter limitations not to apply are in the Senate bill, but not the House bill. Sunset of taxes authorized by the Convention Center law are in 2046 in both bills, January 31st for the sales tax and January 1st for the hospitality taxes. However, in the House bill, if there is a shortfall in revenue at the state, our sales tax would be a backup in years 2047, 2048, and 2049. Also, another backup tax would be the Hennepin County Ballpark Tax. That's in the House and not in the Senate. In the composition of the, or the stadium would be governed by a successor to the Sports Facilities Commission, would be called the Minnesota Stadium Authority. It would have five members, three appointed by the governor, two appointed by the mayor. The buildings under the authority, the stadium, would be the main building or the only building so far under the House bill. In the Senate bill would be the stadium, but Excel, Target Field, Target Center can all opt in. They can join that. State financing, there are pool tabs, same as the House. Other financing, there's appropriations for chronic gambling, things of that nature. And this afternoon in the Senate, there is an appropriation for the St. Paul Excel Energy Center debt.
Could you please give us a little more detail on what has happened regarding the Excel Center that is now tied to the stadium proposal?
Madam Chair, there was an amendment offered this afternoon. I think it was by Senator Metzen. Would require a payment in fiscal year 2014, would be the next biennium of $43 million out of the general fund to the city of St. Paul for Excel Energy Center debt. The author opposed it because it takes, it puts the bill out of balance. It causes a deficit and it causes a deficit in, it just causes a deficit. And I was a big, and she opposed it, but it was put in anyway and it's now been sent to Finance.
I thought in addition to that one-time payment, there were ongoing obligations that would then be also made to the city of St. Paul or to the Excel Center, continuing some sort of subsidy from the state directly to the Excel Center.
Madam Chair and members, there was two amendments. One was accepted, one was withdrawn. One was a $1.3 million annual appropriation from 2014 to 2034. Pretty broad language. The city of St. Paul could use it for operation and maintenance of Excel or other activities in the city. Basically, I think it was for Excel. And then there was an amendment offered and it was withdrawn to take 27 million dollars for the Saints Ballpark.
Madam Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Sam Grabarsky, President and CEO of the Minneapolis Downtown Council, 81 South 9th Street in downtown Minneapolis. I am speaking on behalf of a 50-member Board of Directors representing the largest companies and largest private sector employers of the Central Business District. This facility is very important to the business community. It promotes Minneapolis as a superb place to live, to invest careers, to raise families. It will serve as an extraordinary recruitment tool for the talent of our, for the talent our companies need to attract and retain for those employees necessary to compete. The facility will be an ongoing community asset for 300 days of public events with the public plazas designed into the location. It will be a home for festivals and public events that the Downtown Council and others can program year-round events, employ performers, stage workers, food vendors, and a array of service providers that will keep our economy moving. The facility will allow us again to be competitive again in the important field of hosting large conventions and venues that require thousands of fixed seats and a modern facility equipped with technical capabilities they require. We are on the verge of capturing a great prize for Minneapolis. A new multipurpose stadium, a home for the Vikings, a site for 300 days of other non-professional sporting events. The facility will produce jobs to build it, ongoing jobs for hospitality workers inside it, service jobs for the community to sustain it, and it will foster the ongoing growth of the corporate community that surrounds it. The Vikings will pay for more than half of it. The state will go, will participate for the first time in my memory with several hundred million dollars into a major facility in Minneapolis. We will pay for it without raising any new taxes. You will ensure the future of the Convention Center. You will revitalize the valuable facility called Target Center, clearly seize the day and gain one of the greatest assets and greatest public policy packages the city of Minneapolis may see again for decades to come.
Thank you, Mr. Grabarsky, and well timed.
My name is John Griffith, Executive Vice President, Target Corporation, 1,000 Nicollet Mall, Minneapolis. We are, Target is the state's largest employer. We're proud to employ more than 27,000 people across the state of Minnesota. And in downtown Minneapolis, it's 10,000 people that we bring to the office every day. The vitality of our state's largest urban core is an issue of importance that extends beyond the seven-county metro area. Simply put, when our core cities succeed, the entire state reaps the benefits. That's why I'm here to speak in support of the stadium. This proposal, which over the long run will result in more than half the cost being paid by the Vikings, is more than just keeping the NFL in Minnesota. It's about keeping our entire state competitive. The stadium will generate significant economic benefits through Vikings games, events like concerts, conventions, a potential Super Bowl, professional soccer, NCAA tournaments. It will also be a major selling point as we look to bring new employers to our state. And as our existing job creators like Target work to attract and retain the very best talent, over the last 12 months, Target has added more than 400 headquarter jobs in downtown Minneapolis. We bring them in from colleges and universities and other employers all across the country to be in this city, a first-class NFL city. The stadium is part of the long-term plans of making Minneapolis a great place to visit and to live and to work and do business. The stadium represents connective tissue that holds our community together. This is far less a Vikings home and much more a community asset. And Minneapolis isn't the only community that sees utility in this type of thinking. Across the country, new stadiums have created jobs in the construction, hospitality industries, revitalized communities, and generated long-term growth in places like Seattle, Indianapolis, Pittsburgh, Phoenix, Dallas, Denver, and Baltimore. They've used these kinds of facilities and districts to grow jobs and attract people. Urge your support. We think it's a great opportunity. Strike while you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Meyer, 150 Second Street Northeast, Minneapolis. I'm a resident of Minneapolis. My wife and I have lived in the Minneapolis area on three different occasions recently, four years ago, moving downtown Minneapolis. We currently own a loft northeast Minneapolis and we reside in Diane Hofstedt's Ward, where of course we pay property taxes. I'm also Vice President of AECOM. It's an architectural engineering firm downtown Minneapolis with 200-plus employees in Minneapolis. I know firsthand how badly we need to put people back to work in the design and the construction industry. Not only will the stadium project continue to employ professionals in Minneapolis, but it will also generate about 7,500 construction jobs over the next three years, with hundreds of millions of dollars going directly to wages for local workers. Once built, the stadium will support more than 3,000 ongoing full-time and part-time jobs in the city of Minneapolis. As downtown residents, my wife and I also support projects that contribute to the health and the vitality of our industry. More than a million game attendees and other users of the facility will provide welcome and needed boost to the Minneapolis economy. I was a member of Marilyn Carlson's Super Bowl team when Minneapolis hosted the 1992 Super Bowl. It was a time to bring back the 250 million-plus economic impact this event can bring to this community. And the new stadium positions Minneapolis not only for the future Super Bowls, but for other major sporting events of NCAA, Final Four, Special Olympics, and other major community events. And as always, a concerned taxpayer, I'm encouraged that the proposal would bring $5 million in property tax relief to Minneapolis taxpayers through debt repayment and removing the proposed renovation of Target Center from the city tax rolls. Finally, I thank you, and you should consider that if we lose the Vikings, I will be forced to forever return to being a Green Bay Packer fan, and that would be sad.
Thank you, sir. Next, speeches in support.
Madam Chair, committee, I'm not here to speak necessarily in favor or against.
Your name and your, and we had a list that we had called if you didn't hear.
John Sawyer, 4640 Aldrich Avenue South, Minneapolis. Thank you for having us speak. I'm not necessarily here to speak in favor or against the stadium, but I am here to speak in favor of the city charter. As part of my testimony, I included.
Sir, I would take this as a speech in opposition to the proposal, and if we could then have Mr. Loonberg come forward and I'll make sure that you, or Mr. Klingel. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Todd Klingel. I'm the President of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce, 81 South 9th Street, Minneapolis. Appreciate this hearing today and this opportunity. I do have a purple jersey and I do have a purple tie, and I chose not to wear either of them because to me, this is not about the Vikings. I love the Vikings. God help, let's start winning even more, which wouldn't be hard. But it's more about the city of Minneapolis, which I've worked in for more than 20 years, and the opportunity that's in front of you. It's a complicated opportunity. I appreciate it, Mayor Ryback, holding two forums. I attended both of those forums and all of the hearings thus far and trying to explain what all is involved because there's so much information out there and it cascades and all of a sudden it's, oh, we could be spending this money on schools or something else. We can't be. This money mostly comes from other people. So if you're in the city of Minneapolis and you have the wonderful job that you all have, you're going, well, what about this? Well, what do I get? Well, I get a billion-dollar facility in my city, a facility that will be used 300 times a year, that will bring all kinds of tax dollars to us. It already has proven itself to do that since 1982, that the predecessor facility. And will help job upon jobs, not just building it, not just working in it, but downtown restaurants, downtown hotels, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that this afternoon. And let's see, how much do I have to put up? How much new tax do I have to put up in Minneapolis? None? I don't have to put up any new taxes? No. We take an existing tax that is on hospitality industry and they will again speak on how they're willing to have that continue, and I get all this? I am so pleased that the majority of the city council, led by the city council president and Mayor Ryback, have seen the value of this for this community. And in the hearings over at the state, I want to emphasize that the taxes now coming to the Convention Center clearly are not your taxes. I've been there when they said, let's take those taxes, let's move them over here. And for a short time, they do move them somewhere else. And then we work on it and we bring them back in. So I believe people when they say after 2020, those taxes could go away. What a horrible shame if they could have built this wonderful facility for Minneapolis and for the region as a whole. That's it. And Target Center, please.
Okay. As Mr. Loonberg's making his way up, I'm going to read a few more names. Again, Lester Bagley, Kevin Lewis, Ann Burgett, Dave Dabson, Joy Anderson. Again, we are looking only for those testifying in support, and then we will turn to a half hour from those in opposition. So if your name is called, you're not in support, we'll get to you next.
Good day. Thank you, Councilperson Glidden, committee members. My name is Wade Loonberg, and I'm a resident of the 7th Ward Lowry Hill Neighborhood, 1766 Girard Avenue South. I'm representing Unite Here today, workers in hospitality here in the Twin Cities and across Minnesota, where we have 6,000 workers. Unite Here has 600 good-paying vending and concession jobs tied to the current facility. We actually have a number of members that started in 1963 at Met Stadium. Yes, 1963. In addition, there are another 500 jobs linked to the Metrodome involving security, ticket handling, and other services. We've achieved an agreement with the Minnesota Vikings that would call for the retention of the existing workforce and for the ability, through neutrality, to organize an expansion of any of the concession operations. This is significant as the workforce at any new facility would almost double. This outcome is needed and achieved by providing a level of service, access, and amenities that is now expected at all major sports venues nationwide. The best example right now of this new level of service is at Target Field, which we can all agree has been wildly successful. Providing ticket holders this new level of service and amenities is what our members do consistently at Target Field, Target Center, and the Excel Arena. I might add the Convention Center here in Minneapolis and the River Center in St. Paul as well. Unite Here and the various clubs concessionaires have made these very good jobs in our communities. Again, the best example we can use right now is Target Field. We have 700 people, 700 members on the field at Target Field today. Otherwise, I think you would have had another 100 vendors here in the room. And it's safe to say that a full 50% of those workers come from the city of Minneapolis, and a full half of those workers come from four ZIP codes, 04, 07, 11, and 12. And we know that because of our membership rolls. Today, we're asking that you seriously consider the new facility and that you actually embrace the idea that service sector jobs are good jobs. We've heard otherwise from elected officials, and we don't agree. We believe it's where our economy is, and we're here to make good jobs and to expand the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, just another announcement that Room 319 is open for those who would like to have a seat, just because I know it's hot and people continue to keep coming in, and there are monitors in Room 319 where you can view this public hearing. Mr. Bagley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Lester Bagley. I'm Vice President of Public Affairs and Stadium Development for the Minnesota Vikings. I'm also a resident of Minneapolis. I live in Councilmember Goodman's District on 1820 Irving Avenue South, and I've lived in Minneapolis for about 15 years and love the city. And the Vikings have been here, as you know. We've been tenants at the Metrodome for 30 seasons, and we've been very pleased and grateful to the city, for the city of Minneapolis, for their partnership and their hospitality. It's been a good partnership. We've been here for 30 years. Our hope is that we can turn that into another 30 years and beyond. We want to be in Minneapolis. We have a great site. I think that our view is that the Vikings have responded. As we've talked about this issue for a long time, we've talked about it at the city, and we appreciate the mayor and council president's support and partnership, as well as the members of the council that we've worked with. But we have been at this conversation for a long time. It's been 10-plus years that we have talked about a facility that has been wonderful for this community, but that no longer is competitive in the sense of fan experience and in terms of professional sports, or at least the NFL, can no longer compete in the modern market. It's been a wonderful facility, as you've heard today from the mayor and others, about the multipurpose facility that we're trying to recreate in Minneapolis to give high school sports, amateur events, amateur sports, community events, as well as the significant events that will not return to Minneapolis until and unless this issue is resolved. We will never get another Final Four. We'll never get a Super Bowl and some of those other major events. Again, I think that the Vikings have been at this conversation a long time. We've responded. It's a great site. The Metrodome site serves the state well. We have a doorstep that has the connection between the Hiawatha Light Rail and the Central Quarter Light Rail. It's going to be a great fan experience, and we're grateful for the local partnership. Just last thing I'd like to say is, in terms of the Vikings' commitment, and we want to be your partner. We want to continue. We want to be in Minneapolis for the next generation. We've stepped up. We've stepped up with the third-largest team private contribution in the history of the NFL, $427 million upfront. We've stepped up with a commitment to $13 million a year in operating costs, $13 million, which is the highest rent payment in the NFL for a team that's a tenant. And again, appreciate the time, the opportunity to be here, your hosting and holding this forum, and again, the partnership that we've had with the city council, the mayor, and others in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please.
Madam Chair, committee members, I'm Kevin Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of BOMA, which is the Building Owners and Managers Association of Greater Minneapolis, 121 South 8th Street, Minneapolis, Minnesota. BOMA has over 600 members, and we comprise about 60 million square feet of office space in the greater Minneapolis area. Many of the 140,000 workers in downtown Minneapolis actually conduct business within our member buildings. For our owners and our managers to be able to succeed and have high vacancies, high levels of building usage, developing and retaining tenants is the key. Our destination must be vibrant, must be attractive, affordable, and also be able to conduct business and commerce, and the ability to grow businesses. We believe a new stadium in downtown Minneapolis will enhance our destination and meet some of these points. I spoke this afternoon with Boyd Zokla, who's with the Indianapolis BOMA. He's a former chair, and I asked him the question about a new stadium and what it did to the city of Indianapolis. He mentioned it spurred new building development, many more conventions booked their destination, and of course, repeated Final Fours and other sporting events. To him, he felt it was quite a success for the city of Indianapolis. BOMA, we support the Vikings' stay in Minnesota, and if a stadium is built, we want the stadium to be in Minneapolis. As an aside, and as you've heard a couple different times about Final Fours, I had the privilege of serving on a bidding process committee for future Final Fours about four years ago. It was for five years, and we each had an opportunity. We're up against some wonderful cities, some not-so-wonderful cities, and we were not selected for any of those. For us to be able to obtain sporting events to that nature, we have to look at improving the facility. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Either Dave Dabson, Joy Anderson. Chris Wright.
Hi. My name is Joy Anderson. My address is 2414 Pierce Street Northeast, Minneapolis, Word 1. I work as a banquet server at a downtown hotel. I'm here on behalf of my fellow hotel and restaurant workers. When the Metrodome roof collapsed and Viking games had to be played in other places, it really hurt our business. It hurt housekeepers, cooks, dishwashers, servers, and many others, many of whom live in Minneapolis. They lost much-needed work. We need to keep the Viking Stadium in Minneapolis. To me, this is not about helping billionaires. It is about jobs and helping our fellow citizens to be able to earn a living.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, fellow committee members. My name is Dave Dabson. I represent Piedmont Office Realty Trust, owner of 800 Nicollet Avenue, U.S. Bancorp Center in Minneapolis. I'm here today to register support of the stadium proposal for a number of reasons, some of those that you've already heard today, including vitality of the city, region, and state as an important factor in a successful commercial real estate market in our downtown. The fact that the other supporting, real supportable avenue is the fact that this proposal does not introduce any new taxes on either the residents of Minneapolis or the commercial real estate industry. Furthermore, we particularly support the stadium proposal as it is presented. If the repurposing of the Convention Center tax helps reduce the current burden on property taxes to a tune of approximately $5 million a year by relieving property taxpayers of Minneapolis from the Target Center debt service. I'd just like to close in saying that I don't believe this is a Viking Stadium bill solely. I think it is an economic development opportunity for the city of Minneapolis, and I urge you to support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll read some more names. Chris Wright, Nancy Goldman, Bill McCarthy, Dan McConnell, Derek Manrique.
My name is Chris Wright, and I'm the President of the Minnesota Timberwolves and the Minnesota Lynx, your world champion Minnesota Lynx. We operate at 600 First Avenue North. I'm here today to express our support of the stadium package that's making its way through the legislature over in St. Paul. For more than 20 years, our franchises have had the great partnership, or a great partnership with the city of Minneapolis. In the '90s, in 1995, when it looked like the Timberwolves might move out of state to New Orleans, it was a partnership of our owner, Glenn Taylor, and city officials that ensured at that point Target Center's vitality. A few years later, we worked together again to bring a WNBA franchise to Minneapolis because our owner thought it was important to provide young women with an opportunity to make a living playing professional sports just like men. And last year, when the Lynx won the championship, we saw firsthand how professional sports can help bring a community together and galvanize the community. For more than a decade now, we as partners have tried to find a creative solution for our aging facility. We have explored options and ideas that would allow Minneapolis's civic center to remain really competitive in a very, very competitive world of professional sports and entertainment. For the first time, we now have that comprehensive plan. A plan that has a funding source, a plan that leverages public dollars and secures private dollars, a plan to renovate the cost at one-third the price of a brand-new arena, a plan that creates a sustainable model for the rest of the country to maintain arenas, a plan that will secure Target Center's 900 jobs for the next few decades, a plan that will deliver more than 1,000 construction jobs, and a plan that also addresses the needs of the Convention Center and delivers property tax relief for Minneapolis residents. We fully appreciate the support of the council members who have provided support for this effort to date, and we urge all council members to support this effort moving forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McConnell. Please. And, Mr. McCarthy?
Madam Chair, council members, my name's Bill McCarthy. I'm President of the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, AFL-CIO, and residing at 312 Central Avenue, Southeast Minneapolis, Minnesota. We represent about 25,000 union members who live in the city of Minneapolis. I'm here today to support building a new stadium for the Minnesota Vikings in downtown Minneapolis at the Metrodome site. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership and Council President Johnson and those council members who have, the majority of those council members who have signed on, who support building. on, who support building the stadium in Minneapolis, and I want to thank you for your support. Whether or not to build a new Viking Stadium has been the subject of debate for the last 10 years, now is the time to act. As we meet here this week, a bill to build the new Viking Stadium is moving forward at the legislature. We have a governor who supports it, now you Minneapolis City Council need to add your support too. For labor and all workers in our community, building a new Viking Stadium means jobs. The Vikings estimate that building a new stadium will create 13,000 jobs, including 7,500 construction jobs. Let me tell you, we desperately need these jobs. The unemployment rate is nearly 20% for our brothers and sisters in the building and construction trades. Thanks to a project labor agreement between the Vikings and the building trades, all the construction work on the new stadium, more than 7,500 construction jobs will be union jobs, jobs offering family-supporting wages and benefits. For Unite Here, the Union for Stadium Concession Workers, an agreement with the Vikings means that 600 current Metrodome concession workers will keep their jobs at the new stadium, and an estimated 500 new jobs, new concession workers will be hired. Keeping the Vikings playing in downtown Minneapolis is vital to our hospitality industry. Building a new Viking Stadium means putting thousands of construction workers to work. By your vote today, you can show support for your jobs. I urge you to support and make an investment in a new stadium, a facility that will be an asset not just for Minneapolis, but for the entire state and for a generation to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms...Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and council members, Dan McConnell, 3213 41st Avenue South, and the business manager of the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm here to ask the council to move forward with building of the Viking Stadium. I'd like to thank the governor, the mayor, Council President Johnson, and the majority of the council members that support this project. The tireless efforts in negotiating a deal for the city of Minneapolis has been fruitful, and for the, you know, 7,500 construction workers that we're going to put back to work, it's huge. The residents I've been talking to, the surveys we've been doing, overwhelming majority of my neighbors in Minneapolis want to see this stadium stay in Minneapolis, they want to see the Vikings stay in Minneapolis, and this proposal does that. As you know, the construction industry has been disproportionately affected by the economic downturn over the last several years. The workers I represent have lost more than just their job, they're losing their homes, they're losing their families, their dignity. You know, when I worked at IBW Local 292, I worked with your Civil Rights Department, we certified over 30% of our members who live in the city of Minneapolis as economically disadvantaged sectioned-to-residents. This is a shame that we cannot put our members to work. The council has an opportunity here to have a $1 billion investment in infrastructure in the city of Minneapolis. I cannot see how you can say no. I absolutely don't understand it. I ask everyone to support this.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Goldman?
Yes.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Nancy Goldman, 3609 15th Avenue South. I'm the President of Unite Here Local 17, representing the workers that work in all of the stadiums, and most of, many of the members of our local are women and recent arrivals and new Americans, and these are the people working in many of these facilities. Some of these people have worked in the sports arenas for more than 50 years. These are good jobs, and these are good jobs, and these are not low-paying jobs, and these are not jobs that come in from out of state, these are jobs from people in my neighborhood and on the near-north side, and if we were not, if we were to not have a facility like this could be used year-round, and these would turn these jobs into full-time jobs, jobs that we could, you know, then have benefits for, and these would be full-time jobs, and these people could then be spending the money. And we are committed to moving forward, workers and families forward again in the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota. We're also considering the thousands of other jobs in the hospitality in our downtowns, including another 1,200 Unite Here members that benefit from having the Vikings in Minneapolis. Today, we ask that all the council members seriously engage and address this proposal so that we can get Minnesota working again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, are just maybe seconds shy of having a half-hour for those speaking in support, and so I'm going to turn now to accepting some testimony from those speaking in opposition, less the one speaker who already spoke. So I will read off some names, and if you are here to speak in opposition to the proposal, I ask you to start coming forward. Bob Carney, David Sweet, John Sawyer, if you can start coming forward, Ann Burgett, Derek Manrique, Peter Rickmeyer, Crystal Klein, Joe Schwa, Ed Kohler. I can go back, but again, if you are speaking in opposition to the proposal, come forward, please, and state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, John Sawyer, 4640 Aldrich Avenue South, Lindhurst Neighborhood, Minneapolis. Sorry for the false start before. Madam Chair and members, thank you for allowing all this public testimony, I think it's very important that both sides get a chance to speak. As I said before, I'm not here to speak necessarily in opposition or support of the Viking Stadium, but I am here to speak in favor of the city charter requiring a referendum on this issue. As part of my testimony, I have provided a reprint of a Star Tribune article where Representative Loeffler refutes a lot of the points that have been made by the mayor and some other city council members about the validity of the city charter applying in this case. I won't go over those points, but I do encourage you to read it several times if necessary. There are various legal opinions, of course, on this charter requirement in the context of the Viking Stadium, but in addition to the letter of the law, I'd like to point out the spirit of the law. I believe that the current proposal for the Viking Stadium is exactly what people had in mind when they drafted this city charter amendment back in 1997, and it's what people had in mind when they voted for it, by 70%. This is the exact thing that people had in mind, that is the spirit of the city charter. The current attempt to do an end run around the city charter requirement with all this legalese that's in the bills in the legislature right now, it's the type of thing that will cause people to lose faith in their government. It's clearly an end run, and if you can't have faith in your local government, you can't have faith in the state or the federal government, so I would ask you to please, whether you're in favor or in opposition to the stadium, let the people of Minneapolis have their vote. It's in the charter, that's the spirit of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Burgett?
My name is Ann Burgett, I live at 4147 Blaisdell, Minneapolis. I've lived there since 1979, I've been a Minneapolis resident since 1965. I am very sad to be here today. My frustration is enormous, and my sense of trust with many members of the city council, and particularly with the mayor, is gravely damaged. I listened to corporate leaders just in the last few minutes, talking about, well, Mr. Bagley and other corporate representatives praising the partnership that they feel that they've experienced with Mayor Ryback and Council President Johnson. Minneapolis taxpayers, many of them, do not share that feeling. We would like to have that feeling of partnership with our mayor and our city council. We voted in 1997 in support of a charter amendment that would give us a vote on exactly proposals of this sort. Every effort by the mayor and the council members in support of this bill have been an effort to go around that. The city attorney has not seen fit to put her opinion in writing or attach her name to it. That opinion is not, you can't even say that it's not worth the paper it's written on, it's not even written on paper. The proposal itself changes every time we hear about it, it's a moving target. How do you even know what you support, what you don't support? The median income, according to the U.S. Census Bureau for 2010 for Minneapolis, was $44,478 for a household. Where anybody in this room could possibly get the idea that households like this should be subsidizing billionaire owners and multimillion-dollar sports players is just beyond me. We have a facility that's functional, it works, for 350 days out of the year, it meets the needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, these are testifiers in opposition, sir, come forward.
Hi, my name's Ed Kohler, I live at 3040 46th Avenue South, and what I came to talk about is, even if the city attorney's opinion is correct, which I don't believe it is, on violating the charter, there's still a violation of the charter as far as I'm concerned, because we're acquiring additional land for the stadium. That land is currently taxable and would no longer be taxable, become tax-exempt. That land that goes out to Chicago and over to Fourth is $200,000 a year in taxes. Over 30 years, that's $15 million, even without taking inflation into consideration. So really, it's probably more like $21 million. That's just if it goes to Chicago, and some of the drawings we've seen in the Star Tribune have it going all the way as far as the armory. If that's the case, this is 40, 50 million dollars to give away. The charter, that's the intent of the charter, is to protect against things like this. So let's do it. And if I have a little bit more time, one thing I'd like to say is, $17 million in today's dollars is what Dayton Hudson Corp. put into paying for the Metrodome. If you look at it on a percentage of the cost, they, local business leaders in downtown Minneapolis put money in to help build the Metrodome. If you look at the percentage of what it cost to build a Metrodome, and you do the same thing for a billion-dollar stadium, if Target wrote a check for $17 million, that would be equitable to what they did 30 years ago. Personally, I would like to see Target start to, I would like to see Target stop putting their name on billings that they're not helping pay for. So, thank you.
I'm going to keep reading names and come forward if you are wanting to testify in opposition to the proposal. John Sawyer, Tony Scallan, Gerald Savage, John Schreiner, Giovann Jenkins, Mark Remy, Laura Layman, David Para. If any of these people are here and wish to testify in opposition. Okay, that's fine, we'll come back to you.
Madam Chair and council members, my name is Laura Layman, my address is 6820 Wooddale Avenue South in Edina. Although I do not live in Minneapolis, I am a physician who volunteers my time at a Minneapolis clinic for patients with little or no medical insurance. My patients, residents of your city, are people who work very hard and must make even harder choices. For example, the choice between food and life-saving medicine. They can't afford medical tests that most of us take for granted. One patient of mine with unexplained weight loss has been waiting since 2010 for an abdominal CT scan to rule out cancer. Now he has arm weakness, but since he can't afford a head CT scan, we don't know if he has had a stroke or if cancer is spreading to his brain. When its citizens are in such dire need of the most basic services, how can the city contemplate contributing $150 million plus $187 million in operating costs toward a stadium for a privately-owned sports team? When borrowing costs are considered, the cost to the city will exceed $600 million. This far exceeds the $10 million trigger for a referendum specified in the city charter. Yet some of you seem prepared to accept a certain amount of legal tap dancing to ignore this fact. As a resident of Hennepin County, I know what it means to have my right to a referendum denied. The Hennepin County Board and Legislature did just that in order to build a ballpark for the Polads. Will you follow their lead and allow major league sports and big business to dictate policy for the citizens of Minneapolis? I hope your conscience prohibits that. My patients are in dire need of city and state officials with a conscience. Please withhold your support from any Viking Stadium bill that requires public funding. All of the benefits are pointed out.
Start wrapping up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chuck Turcik, Michael Ketch, Charlie Underwood, Jen Antilla, Antilla, Millie Schaefer. Any of those people come forward, please, if you want to testify in opposition, and then we will turn back to the supporters' testimony.
This is Minneapolis residents only.
No, it's everyone who came to speak at the public hearing, but we are asking for your name and your address as part of the public hearing process.
Madam Chair, committee members, my name's Chuck Turcik, 2112 Portland Avenue South. There have been so many word gains on this stadium issue that my head is spinning. In letters to the governor and the authors of the Minneapolis Stadium Plan, Council Member Wright's letter was just addressed to the governor, six of you wrote, "I or we will not take a vote on a Viking Stadium that violates the city's charter." That identical language was in all six letters, so I'm assuming it was written by one person, and therefore probably carefully crafted, but I can't figure out what the heck it means. And I graduated from the Minneapolis Public Schools, and I speak and read English. "I will not take a vote on a Viking Stadium that violates the city's charter." What does that mean? If the bill includes a waiver of the charter's referendum provision, and the Senate version of the bill still does, as you heard earlier, wouldn't a vote on your part approving the bill in fact not violate the city charter? Or did you mean that you would not approve a bill that included such a waiver? Your obfuscation, my confusion. In addition, Mayor Ryback has repeatedly said the city charter provision was not in play. For example, he said it in a March 30th Almanac interview, and he and the city attorney said it before the House Commerce Committee. But of course, the bill had a waiver of this not-in-play charter provision. What for? Then, before the House Government Operations Committee, Council President Johnson and the city attorney again testified that the waiver was needed for Target Center expenditures. Pardon my confusion. One of three things must be true: either the mayor and the council president disagreed about whether the section waiving the charter provision was needed, and City Attorney Siegel disagreed with herself, or they agreed, but their position changed between the April 2nd and April 16th testimony, or someone's trying to pull the wool over our eyes. This is not about the unsightfulness of watching legislation and sausage being made, this is not about spin, this is about trust. Government must be built on trust, trust among you, trust between you and the mayor, and trust between elected officials and the public. I cannot trust my city officials on this issue. I ask you to watch the Almanac interview and those two testimonies before the two House committees consecutively. I gave you in a longer email the exact places in the video where those, the relevant parts are. If you watch them, and if you speak and understand English, your heads will be spinning too. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, Michael Ketch, 111 Marquette Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Ward 7 Downtown. I actually live only blocks away from the proposed stadium, from the current stadium. And I'll tell you that, there's more to life than property tax reform, not that we're going to get any in this bill, because I've been at the legislature almost every day this week, and Target Center being a part of this bill seems to be iffy at best. We'll only get Target Center in the bill if somehow or other we can pay for XL Center, because you can't favor one county over another. I've been through this at the legislature. But we do need sales tax reform as well as property tax reform. Living in downtown, I use the restaurants, I buy groceries at Target, I spend a lot of money downtown. Therefore, that 3% tax that is imposed on me being, you know, going to entertainment and buying food and doing other things downtown, I and my 32,000 other neighbors, and by the way, there's going to be more of us because they're building over the way, there's going to be more of us, because they're building, over the Whole, new Whole Foods over by the Jaguar dealership, or where the Jaguar dealership used to be, there's a new development going up in North Loop, there's, they're turning the Suleyne Building into 250 more apartments, so that's going to ease the glut of office space. There's two projects that I know of in the Lowering Park area. So when you talk about, oh my God, there's no construction jobs, all I've seen out of this council is construction jobs. We're building all over Minneapolis. We're building residential real estate, and we're going to continue. We need residential real estate in Minneapolis. But I digress. The key here is that we want that sales tax to expire in 2020. We don't want it to go on to 2045. And we deserve the right to vote in a referendum on whether or not that sales tax continues or not.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is Charlie Underwood. I live at 3540 40th Avenue South, that's Ward 12. I've lived there for 14 years. I've lived for just under 20 years in Minneapolis. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught for 41 years and retired just two and a half years ago. 19 of those years were in the public schools of Minneapolis or St. Paul. As a retired teacher, combining Social Security and my teacher's retirement, I receive a little under $2,000 a month. I have managed to create some construction jobs myself out of that money. We spent almost $40,000, I'm sorry, almost $30,000 on a new metal roof and solar panels for our house. We spent a couple thousand dollars on insulation for the house. As a result, my monthly gas bill is $31. I defy any of you to match that. My electric bill, as far as I can tell, over the next 30 years is going to be approximately $0. For me, that was an investment. I made it willingly, even though it makes my budget kind of tight. But the fact of the matter is, is that in my entire life, I have only earned approximately, in 41 years of teaching, I have only earned approximately what one star football player gets in one game. One game. We have been told that there is no tax increase, and in fact, we are going to be rolling in money because the property taxes are going to go down. But when you look at the figures, we've got $600 million that's going to take us into tax debt up until the year 2045, or I just heard 2049. This is huge. The reality is that we have made bad decisions in the past with the Target Center and the Convention Center, and we are multiplying those bad decisions with a billion-dollar investment that we can't afford. Realistically, Ziggy can afford this stadium. We can't. I've got six stints in my heart. Do you really think that I want a stadium instead of a response team? Let's be realistic. Think who you represent. Are you really representing us in this matter? Not if you favor the stadium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Going through more names. Jen Antilla or Antilla, Millie Schaefer, Brenda Gross, I believe, someone on 37th Avenue South, Joanne Hager, Giovann Jenkins, Joe Hesler, Ken Bradley. Some of these people I believe that I have seen, I see people coming forward. Tanisha Flowers, Paul Bernberg. Again, we are still taking testifiers in opposition, and I do know some people, it seems like, have gone to the other room, so we want to give them time to hear their name and come forward. Again, these are testifiers in opposition. Sir?
Good morning. I'm Ken Bradley. I live at 3144 Dupont Avenue. And I know this is a difficult choice, and I'm not necessarily anti-Vikings. I actually met my wife watching the Vikings-Bears game, so there's some sentimental meaning to the Vikings in my life. And I'm a Timber Wolf season ticket holder, so I've got two of those down. But regardless of that, I think my issue is that when we look at the revenue coming in, whether it be property taxes, which will be from players, most of those won't live in the city of Minneapolis, sales taxes, income taxes, most of those taxes are not coming to the city of Minneapolis at the end of the day. And the city of Minneapolis is taking on a significant burden. What that exact burden is, I think, is still to be defined. And I think that as city taxpayers, to be stuck for another 20 years, or whatever the extension is, paying additional taxes, I do think is an issue. I think anyone who pays property taxes, city of Minneapolis, pays any other taxes, knows that we have a tax issue and we have a revenue issue. And I'm not sure if the Vikings situation solves either of those things. So my concern is that we're actually going to be the people on the end of it with the worst part of the deal. I think that the state's going to make out fine. And I think my final issue that I really have with the Vikings stadium, or the People's Stadium, or whatever stadium you want to call it, the Vikings are the ones who want it the most, and we know that. And they are private corporation, but as far as I know, and maybe someone will tell me I'm wrong here, they have not opened up their books to the public. We know that they apparently need this to be financially viable, but I don't really know they need this to be financially viable. If I need to get a student loan for my son, I have to open up my books. I would hope that if they were going to get as much money from the city of Minneapolis, the state of Minnesota, that they would have to open up theirs.
Thank you, sir. Next. Name and address, please.
My name is Joe Hesler. I live at 3519 23rd Avenue South, the 9th Ward. I don't own a corporation. I don't work for Target. I don't stand to gain a job from the stadium. I did work in 1997 to collect signatures, and we overwhelmingly passed a provision to the city charter that in a situation like this, we would be given a chance to vote it up or down. Everybody knows what would happen in Minneapolis if we got busy and looked for signatures and got people out to vote. And so, that's why the mayor doesn't want that to go to a referendum, but there will be accountability on this at the city council level and at the mayor level. And I don't think, I don't believe there will be no taxes for Minneapolis people. I don't know how many, how many people do believe that. That sounds like, I don't know where that comes from. Just not, just not believable. So I would ask you to vote this down, think about, think about your responsibilities.
Thank you, sir. Name and address.
My name is Tanisha Flowers, NFA 1414 Plymouth Avenue North. And I'm not here to oppose or agree with the stadium, but I just want to put this on the record. We would like to thank the Chair Glidden and the council members for allowing us to testify today. I'm here to discuss the unacceptable employment disparities people of color face in our region. As many of you know, in the Twin Cities metro area, black residents are nearly four times more likely to be unemployed as white residents. Mayor Ryback referred to the disparities as morally wrong and potentially economically ruinous in his State of the City address earlier this month. We must use every opportunity to address these disparities that we can find, like the Viking Stadium. If the stadium is built, there must also be an action to get more people of color into jobs. We think, thank Mayor Ryback for his strong words about disparities. We also thank the eight city council members who signed on the letter in February outlining four key proposals in reducing disparities. The principles that we outlined include increasing hiring goals for people of color on construction projects, a percentage of the permanent jobs going to the people of color, an ongoing funding stream of at least a million a year to fund sustainable and effective job training and placement programs for at least 30 years. The last principle is the key, because it is long-term commitment to placing people in jobs with families sustaining wages. We hope that the mayor and the other council members here today will also support our effort in racial disparities in employment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bernberg?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Glidden and members of the council. My name is Paul Bernberg. I live at 3439 11th Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm not here on behalf of some organization. I'm just a guy, one of the citizens in this, in this city. I want to make a couple points. First, one thing this committee does not have to decide, I don't think, I'm sure of, is whether or not this proposal is supported by the citizens of Minneapolis. I think the answer to that is clearly no. The only reason why there's opposition to a referendum by the supporters of the stadium and vice versa, is because everybody knows the city citizens are overwhelmingly against the proposal. And sometimes you want to pass something anyhow, but I suggest that you should do that if you've got something of important social interest, like civil rights legislation, not a proposal that's essentially special interest legislation on behalf of the Vikings owners and their employees. Secondly, putting aside the legalisms of whether or not this is a continuation of a tax, a new tax and old tax, if you continue a tax that I calculate to be about per four -person family, $3,136, that would otherwise expire, it's effectively the same as starting a new tax for that amount. So that's what this is. This is a new tax primarily to fund the Viking Stadium. Now, I'm not, I'm like a lot of citizens in this, in this city. I gladly pay taxes. I pay taxes for things that are not specially interested to me. I gladly pay school taxes and the after-referendum, even though my only child's 22 and in North Dakota. Lastly, I want to point, it's a terrible deal for Minneapolis. It's not the Minneapolis Vikings, it's the Minnesota Vikings. Minneapolis is 1/14th of the state, and this bill, this proposal, has Minneapolis paying one-half the taxes. The construction jobs will be from all over. Some Minneapolis residents, but not everybody. The attendees will be from all over, not a quarter, and other jobs are going to be from all over. It's a gross fraction to have the city pump up, put up half the federal, the state tax dollars for where we're one-quarter of the citizens. I urge you to stop this, get a deal that's, that's good for the citizens of Minneapolis and not just the Vikings or a small group. Thank you. I apologize for going over time.
Okay. And we have time for just one more, so I will read a few names. David Pera, Kifa, 36th Avenue South, Chuck Holtman. Sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. My name is Chuck Holtman, and I live on Malcolm Avenue Southeast. My wife and I have lived and worked in Minneapolis for 17 years. We've raised two daughters here. And the existence of a professional football team here was, was not one of the reasons that we took into account in deciding to move here. But first, I'd like to speak about the financial aspects. If Ziggy Wolf or any other sophisticated investor were in the city's position, what would the diligence be for this project? And why should we do less? Before the city makes a commitment, there's no excuse for not investing in whatever it takes for a rigorous economic study. Costs and revenues are based on assumptions. What are they? How far off might they be? How does the risk fall among the parties if they turn out to be incorrect? And how can the city's exposure be affected down the road by a legislature with malice toward the urban core? The funding here rests on an extension of the legislature's grant to the city to levy taxes. What would make this council believe that the legislature's commitment would be reliable through the decades that would be required for the revenues to be produced? We've already seen in one example, the school context, how the legislature's reliability is very insecure. What jobs could be produced with other uses of these funds? What are the alternative uses over the next 30 years or more for what is the most valuable real estate in the state of Minnesota? If you have this exacting review, then we are not aware of it. But until you and your constituents have a serious analysis in hand, I would suggest that your fiduciary duty requires that you withhold your vote. The last thing that I would say very quickly is that, with due respect for Mr. Grabarski's very august testimony, I believe that the argument about the need for the stadium to attract people is, rests on obsolete assumptions. I would suggest that what makes Minnesota vital and attractive in the years ahead is the influx of diverse cultures and families from around the country, as well as from other countries. I don't believe this rests on whether there's a professional sports team here. It rests on all of the qualities that you know and we know make this city sustainable and a great place to live. Sustainable cities are built on civic engagement, organic growth, and quality of life.
Sir, if you can wrap up, please.
And not on coliseums and circuses. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We will now turn back to one half hour of testimony from those in support of the stadium, and I will go back to some of the names earlier on the list. Bob Carney and David Sweet. Again, these are, we're asking for supporter testimony. Derek Manrique, Peter Rickmeyer, Crystal Klein, Joe Schwi. Oh, I'm sorry. Tim Murray, Dan McElroy. Are any of these people? Come forward if, I'm sorry, my head was down at the beginning.
Good evening, council members.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Peter Rickmeyer, 2118 25th Avenue North, Minneapolis. I live in the Jordan neighborhood, Don Samuel's Ward. He's a very good council member. First of all, the Honorable Ryback, at a hearing at the Capitol about a month ago, said that we collect about $450 million more than what the state gives us back. My suggestion is, before that $450 million goes into the state general fund, that we capture that money and send it to build the stadium. Therefore, the money's not coming from the general fund, and it's not coming from the city. The couple other things that I would like to mention is that out of the billion dollars, about $750 million will be used for payroll. $250 million roughly will be recouped by the taxpayers through payroll taxes. Again, that's $250 million back to the taxpayers out of the 450 million that we use for the stadium. Last but not least, the discretionary spending that'll be caused would be more than $100 million from the $750 million in payroll. Thank you, Mr. Lohr. Out of that $100 million, that'll create more jobs to what in the community. The last thing that I want to say is that in order for us to support the schools, the police, and the fire department, we need taxpayers. In order to get taxpayers, we need jobs. So to get a better police force and a better fire department, we really do need the Viking Stadium to be built. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McElroy.
My name's Dan McElroy. I'm Executive Director of the Minnesota Restaurant Association. I'm here on behalf of our members. Our offices are at 305 Roseland Avenue East in Maplewood. We have about 200 members in the city of Minneapolis. Our board has considered this proposal specifically and voted to offer our support, even though it means that our members will be the collection agent for a tax for a long time. And we did that carefully, considering the balance between the importance of these public facilities, between the importance of the brand value of the Twin Cities as a major metropolitan region, and the competitive risk that we take when our guests will be able to go not very far and enjoy dining or lodging at somewhat lower prices. However, after considering those balance, we believe that the vitality of the metropolitan area is enhanced by this proposal, and our members are supportive. We are, we believe that it is not something that we do for billionaire owners or millionaire players, but rather for fans. 2.6 million Minnesotans watch the average Vikings game or listen to it on the radio. Many of them do that around the televisions in our establishments, and we're grateful for their business. We'd be grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Hello, my name is Joe Schwi, 54 Hello, my name is Joe Schwi, 5404 Logan Avenue South, the great neighborhood of Armitage. I'm here as a fan. I am a fan of our professional sports teams. I'm also a fan of the vitality they bring downtown. I'm a fan of how teams have the unique ability to bring a community together and I'm a fan of the memories that these sports teams create in Minnesota families. Your support of this stadium package will ensure that we'll stay vital downtown, that we will continue to bring people together and that will create memories for Minnesota families for years and years to come. And as a homeowner in Minneapolis and someone who started a young family, any kind of property tax relief would certainly be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next come forward.
My name is Crystal Klein, 209 East 19th Street, Minneapolis, downtown here. Not only with my support, but I know there's a lot, a lot of other people in this room here and out in the hall supporting you guys and we would really appreciate if you would vote yes. Thank you.
Short and sweet. To the point. Sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Nicola Ramirez. I live in 405 Fifth Street Southeast. That's in the Marcy Home Neighborhood, Neighborhood, Third Ward. I work downtown. I walk from home every day downtown, walk by the Metrodome and I think it's just an area that really needs more investment. I think I see this opportunity, not just as a Viking stadium. I didn't grow up here, so I don't have any loyalties with the Vikings, but I do think that a project like this will be a great way to start a revitalization of downtown and create more jobs for everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will read some more names. Again, Tim Murray, Chris Stark, Steve Mattson, Alan Ackberg, Mary Claire Olson in parentheses.
Hi, my name is Chris Stark. I live at 3412 Pillsbury Avenue South in the Wyndham neighborhood and I would just like to express my support for this current stadium proposal. I, I work downtown and it's events and facilities like the stadium that's proposed that brought me to Minneapolis to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, Mayor Ryback. My name is Steve Mattson. I'm the General Manager for AEG at Target Center, 600 First Avenue North. I work for AEG, who was hired by the city of Minneapolis to manage Target Center. I've worked at the arena since it opened in 1990. In the nearly 22 years since the venue opened, we've hosted over 4,000 events and nearly 30 million people. Target Center provides more than $100 million in annual economic impact that would not otherwise exist. In addition to 200 full-time and 700 part-time jobs at Target Center, it supports 1,000 jobs in the hotel, bar and restaurant industry. The arena is a proven regional asset for Minneapolis and all of Minnesota. I urge you to vote yes in support of the Viking Stadium, Target Center renovation package. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mary Claire Olson Potter, 800 LaSalle Avenue, Minneapolis. I was born and raised in the Hale Page, Diamond Lake neighborhood and I've worked in downtown Minneapolis for nearly 10 years. I work for an architecture engineering firm that has been in this state for more than 100 years and employs over 200 people in Minneapolis and 300 statewide. The challenges our industry has faced for the past several years have been great. We need to get people back to work and this proposal will help accomplish that. I am asking for your support for this proposal, for this new stadium. This is about creating jobs and providing a multipurpose facility for this state. This job creating proposal will generate 7,500 construction jobs over a three-year period, over 300 million in wages that will go directly to local construction workers, create hospitality jobs within this city, and the new stadium will support over 3,400 full and part-time jobs. In addition, this proposal will provide a renovation of Target Center, which will prevent the need for a new replacement facility down the road, restore its competitiveness and economic vitality. This in turn will provide $5 million in property tax relief to Minneapolis taxpayers. The proposed multipurpose stadium facility will allow Minneapolis to continue to host hundreds of community events, draw visitors from the metro and out of state year-round. Stadia, facilities such as a stadium, Target Center, pro and amateur sports teams, along with the arts and cultures that we provide here, often improve the quality of life and help attract workers to this city. Now is the time to move this stadium proposal forward. The people of Minneapolis, the people of this state need the jobs and this decision is about creating jobs. I ask for your support for the proposed Viking Stadium financing package. Thank you for your time and for your leadership.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ackberg.
Councilmember Glenn, members of the council, mayor. My name is Alan Ackberg, 4200 Forest Road, St. Louis Park. I am with Parisoli Restaurant Holdings. We own 14 restaurants in the Minneapolis-St. Paul market and in the Minneapolis market specifically, we own Manny's, Chino Latino Cafeteria and Burger Jones. Those four restaurants employ 500 people. Manny Steakhouse located at 9th and Marquette employs 200. We believe that the Vikings are an important state, regional and city asset and must be retained and remain in Minneapolis. Our professional sports teams, including the Vikings, are a significant and important source of generative revenue for Minneapolis and local businesses. We know this is especially true for Manny's and we believe our experience is not unique. Sales on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays with Vikings home games are 30% higher than sales on weekends with no games or away games. That translates directly into bigger paychecks and tips for all of our employees. We strongly encourage the Minneapolis City Council to support the Viking Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will read some more names. John Wood, John Sawyer, Tony Scallan, Gerald Savage, John Schreiner, Giovann Jenkins. Any of those people? Come forward then and start taking testimony from this group. Sir, your name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is John Wood, members of the city council and Mr. Mayor. John Wood, I'm Senior Vice President of Mortenson Construction. I live at 9590 Amesbury Lane, Eden Prairie. It has been my privilege and that of my company to be involved in the construction of several of the, of the great civic facilities for the city of Minneapolis, including the Minneapolis Convention Center, Convention Center expansion, Minneapolis Central Library and most recently the Target Field for, for the Minnesota Twins and Minnesota Baseball Authority and yes, the Aging Target Center. And there is one common characteristic that applies to all of those projects with regard to employment and that is the great employment of people of color and women in the workforce on those projects. At the insistence of the city council and in the case of Target Field, the Hennepin County Commission, aggressive goals were set for each of those projects for the employment of people of color and women in the construction workforce. Those goals were met or exceeded in every one of those projects and as a matter of fact, if you take those projects in aggregate, 30, 37% of the employment in the construction trades represented minorities and, and women in the trades. Furthermore, on each of those projects, an aggressive plan was put in place for the engagement of what was referred to as a community workforce program that targeted either unemployed or underemployed citizens of Minneapolis, particularly from the inner city. In the case of Target Field as an example, there was a goal for 50, employment of 50 people in that category and 62 people were employed during the course of the project. As you've heard before, about 7,500 people will be employed in the construction of a new multipurpose facility. I think based on the track record that the city has achieved on other projects, a large percentage of them will be from minorities and females in the construction workforce and we think that that will be a badly needed infusion of, of jobs when it's desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, my name is John Schreiner. I live at 215 10th Avenue South, a block and a half from the dome. So you're talking about my neighborhood. A while back, Charles Dickens wrote in Tale of Two Cities, "It was the best of times, it was the worst of times." At this point, we face that dichotomy right now because the status quo is not going to be sustained. We're either going to face a future in my neighborhood where we see a new vital stadium with the attendant development that'll go along with it, additional jobs for our trade unionists, our hospitality workers and a huge number of people within my neighborhood. Or it could be the worst of times. The Vikings leave the Metrodome. We're now saddled with a facility that is unusable, out of date. No one would want to move there. Who then pays for the maintenance of that? We'd have to pick up that tab to the tune of $5 to $7 million a year. That's not a future that I'd like to contemplate for my neighborhood and I ask the, you city council members, thank you for those who support. I ask the support of those who may not necessarily be in my camp, but please, don't consign my neighborhood to a Dickensian future.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Giovann Jenkins, 4045 3rd Avenue South, Minneapolis. I strongly support this. I happen to work in a profession where I have the opportunity to coach young adolescent, inner-city youth to dream and dream big. What happens when kids play the sport of football within my program is, is sometimes amazing. We have kids that come from nothing, that, that shoot for the, the moon and they may land on the star, but without the dream of playing professional sports and without the dream of, of making it big, who knows where they would be? So I speak to you today out of passion. Thank you for those of you who support this. It will, it will honestly help, it'll help me in my efforts. I would like to thank Mr. Wilf himself and the Vikings organization for donating $200,000 to our football program or our school to enhance our stadium. That's something that's going to go a long way to adding artificial turf. It's going to allow us to have a level playing field in late November when our grass is all tore up because we have so many sporting teams, so many community organizations that use our facilities. It, it'll allow us to, to have an aesthetically pleasing and beautiful field turf within a, a nice community and that's really all I have to say. So thank you, those of you who support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scallan.
I'm Tony Scallan and I know like General MacArthur said, old soldiers should just fade away. I'm sorry. I haven't faded away yet. I was, I'm for the stadium. Those, most of you know that. I post and I give things, but I had an experience today that really talks why you need the stadium. The student who talked earlier, Ms. Flowers, is a student of mine from my school. There's a young man who works for the Timberwolves who was a student from another school. I'm speaking today more than all the jobs. I'm for all the laboring jobs, all the jobs, but folks, the entertainment industry and the stadium give my students hope. They give them hope because they can get their first job there. And some people put that down, not paying enough. Well, when, when you can make some $10, $12, $15 an hour job by working all day at the Timberwolves or at the, the, actually the Twins have been hiring more. So folks, there's a lot on the stake for the inner-city kids that I have served for the last eight to 10 years, 15 actually. They need these jobs. These are important jobs for them and of course, being a union teacher, my union friends need the jobs very badly and I really support them. But I want you to think about the young folks and what opportunity this is. And the last thing I heard by a former student, a student, Jock I guess, he said, you know if the kids dream, support their dream. I have, I have about 50 kids that are going to the NBA. Now you know there's a little less reality to that, but they're working hard, heading towards college or vocational school and that's what we got to do. That's what this inspires. That's why I support the stadium. Thank you. Now I'll fade away.
Thank you, sir. We still have more time for those testifying in support of the stadium. Ed Reynoso, Mark Remay, David Para. If any of these names are people who wish to testify in support, come forward. Jen Antila, Millie Schaefer, Brenda Gross, Joanne Hager. Again, these are testifiers in support.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to, to be here before you. My name's Edward Reynoso. I am the Political Director for the Teamsters Joint Council 32. I, I want to thank you in anticipation of the success of this vote. I want to thank the mayor for all his help that he's put into it, President Johnson. I mean, obviously, everybody's worked in this and, and has a lot at stake here. I want to talk about jobs. Something you guys haven't heard about today, right? I just received an email from the Department of Employment and Economic Development. I happen to be on the Unemployment Advisory Board. Last week, the state of Minnesota paid out $28,105, I'm sorry, $28,105,619 for unemployment benefits. These are real people, real people that need jobs. The scariest thing about it, 785 people fell off of the benefits of unemployment benefits that they receive. So 785 families that are impacted that will be receiving zero. This is about jobs. This is about creating jobs. 7,500 construction jobs. 20 to 30% of our construction labor is out of work right now. 3,400 roughly permanent jobs. Many of them will be union jobs, if not all of them, will be good-paying jobs. I want to, I want you to get the impact of not only the jobs that will be impacted without the building of the stadium, but also the jobs that not building the stadium on the outer core will create. Beer truck drivers, pop drivers, food drivers, bread drivers, hotel workers, taxi drivers, liquor distributors, liquor store owners and so on down the line. But this will impact, this is going to put people back to work that are steel workers, cement workers, masonry workers, gravel drivers, cement drivers, crane operators and manufacturing jobs that will be able to put everything together to build for the stadium. This is about jobs. Plain and simple, jobs that your constituents need, our members need, which thousands of them are your constituents. I appreciate you taking the opportunity to hear us out today and I, again, I thank you in anticipation of your vote.
Thank you, sir. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Jen Antila. I live at 4336 Colfax Avenue South and I came over to Minneapolis from South St. Paul. I bleed blue blood, Minneapolis blood, Monday through Saturday and Vikings blood, Sunday, purple. I'm a small business owner and a Minneapolis homeowner since 1998. I am a big supporter of the stadium. You don't have to look very far to look at, find partnerships between civic and corporations in our past and I won't go into detail about what I found, but any of you that are interested can find that that's a huge contributor to our urban core, our vibrancy. Government and corporate partnership is critical to the health of our city, I believe, and as a result, I believe that this is a really important deal for us to support. So I believe that this is the best crack at a deal we'll see. I think the cost of losing this franchise is huge and this critically-minded, Minneapolis-loving urban- And this critically-minded, Minneapolis-loving, urban core devotee and not corporate person implores, please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Joanne Hager. I live in President Johnson's district. I live in North Minneapolis, and I'm a Labor Lyona member. My address is 1419 39th Avenue North. I'm a homeowner in North Minneapolis, and I'm a Summit Academy graduate, another wonderful thing on the North Side. And I was hired because of the hiring incentives at the TCF Gophers Stadium. I was introduced into the construction field by Summit Academy, and I am grateful that as of the last few years, I am now a taxpayer, not just property tax, but a taxpaying person in this society. I'm speaking in favor of the stadium. My good friend is a concession worker who relies on public transportation to get to work downtown. Minneapolis is a wonderful place for a stadium. It's a wonderful place for workers to get to work, to work at a stadium. My sister-in-law works banquets at a hotel in downtown Minneapolis. She also relies on the building of a stadium to help her with her income. And again, we're grateful for the leadership of the city council. I know it's been a very difficult subject for some of you to side with. We appreciate you doing the best thing, the right thing, for the people who vote you to make difficult decisions. We can't imagine all the things that go on and all the things that go into coming up with the decisions that you have to make, but we appreciate the leadership of the mayor, and I appreciate the leadership of Ms. Johnson to support this measure. I hope others on my, at my union and all the other construction unions get off the bench and get to work in building a stadium. And thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Remy. I'm from 2910 James Avenue South here in Minneapolis. And I'm here as a fan today, a lifelong Minnesota fan, a guy that grew up three and a half hours away in LeFerrin, Minnesota, wearing Chris Carter jerseys, playing football in the front yard with my dad. And I just want to support this stadium, support the opportunity to keep Minnesota with the Vikings, and just be able to share those kind of memories, you know, with my kids and be able to go to games with my kids in the years to come. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have time for at least one more supporter.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council. I'd like to thank Kevin Ray, first ward, council member.
Your name and your address, too, please.
For my word, I'm from Minneapolis, 3609 Architect Avenue, Northeast Minneapolis, probably one of the shortest avenues in the city.
And your name, sir?
It's Donald McMillan. I'm a carpenter, I'm a union carpenter, but over the last three years, I've been spending more time on the bench than I've been spending working. It's important. I have a family. I grew up in Minneapolis. I'm 58 years old. None of us are getting any younger. We need to work. I appreciate that you folks are doing a hard job. I appreciate that Kevin has listened to me when I've spoken to him. I appreciate that the mayor stands a position of supporting unions. I think we need union work here. I have a lot of guys on the bench with me that would rather be working than sitting there with no income, trying to raise their families, trying to pay for the high price of gas. I served my country for 17 years. I was a military police K-9 officer. I've served as a volunteer for Minneapolis, both on the Minneapolis Fire Reserve as a civil defense fireman and as Minneapolis Police Reserve and Unit 900 as a dispatcher. I think I've served my community. I think I've served my state. I think this is a very important stadium to build in our wonderful city that will bring jobs to all of us and keep me working. I have a few more years to go before I can retire, so it's very important. It's very important to all these people that want jobs, the unions that want work. I ask, because I've served you, it's now your turn to serve me and give me a job. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. We will now turn to some testimony from opponents. Okay. I thought I said one more. We had time for one more, and that was our one more. I apologize on the supporter side. We'll now turn, and I will read off some names because people have signed up to testify. Millie Shafer, Brenda Gross, Mel Reeves, David Pifa, 36th Avenue South, I apologize, Dave Bicking, Jim Hoffner, Al, okay, Phil Wilkey, John Colstad, Susan Worley. If any of these people are here, if you could line up. Thank you. And you can go ahead, sir, and, okay. For those, Al, just let me just take one moment. For those who had signed up to testify in support, and we did not get to your testimony, if you would like to submit something in writing to us to make sure that your comments are part of the public testimony, we can accept that. There's some forms out front, or you can send something to the email address cityclerk@minneapolismn.gov, and the city clerk can help you, so you don't have to remember what I said. We'll accept that until the close of business tomorrow. I apologize. I know there were lots of people who have signed up, and if we have time at the end getting through the opponents, then we can return to if there are still supporters. So that is what I can offer.
My name is David Para, 5336 36th Avenue South. Minds are already made up here, of course, so all we're doing is gestating our positions more than anything else. But first of all, I was a school administrator. I worked in the Midwest and in five international schools overseas. And when I do look at the process, when I retired and came back to Minnesota, I have to say that there is distrust in government. International studies show that in honesty in government and business, the United States ranks 20th. The Western European democracies, Canada, all rank above us. And when I speak to neighbors, it's just the fact that they feel an end run has been done on them. And I have to feel the same way. I worked in Ukraine and Kazakhstan. I was a superintendent at an international school in Kazakhstan. And this almost kind of reminds me of the Supreme Soviet with Pravda over here to my left, that, you know, I can talk and talk and not much is going to happen. And we also have a feeling, we just have a feeling that the system is not fair. People are not listening. There's supposed to be a referendum, but no referendum is going to be held. It will skirt. We skirt the issue simply. And then another thing is, the books are not open. As a superintendent, if I were to go to my parents' constituents and say, I need money, I would be laughed out with this type of arrangement. And I will conclude by saying that those of us who are opposed to this are not against jobs. We're pro-jobs, but research from Roger Knoll, Dave Zirin, and others shows that money can be spent more efficiently in other areas and not on stadiums. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilkey?
My name is Phil Wilkey. I live at 2625 Newton Avenue South, and I'm here to speak on the charter amendment. I'd just like to say that in the recent years, if we look at the, I think we all have a lot in common in this room politically. We probably were wanting every ballot in Florida to be counted. What was the voters' intent if they circled the name Ohio, the Franken-Coleman race? And now in the state of Minnesota, we have this whole issue of voter ID and limiting people's right to vote. There is a very, I think people here know that the intent of, what the intent of the charter was. If you vote against, I think, let's have a fight. Let's have a fight before the city. The stadium proponents can argue for it. We can oppose it. This is what democracy looks like. If people in the council here, if you think you're going to get around this by some technicality, you are denying the people here their intent. This is a violation of the citizens of Minneapolis, their right to make a choice, their right to have democracy in this city. We all share similar goals. We all want to grow this city. We all want jobs. We all want, you know, tax, property tax relief. Nobody, we are unified in all these things. But what we must be unified in is giving people the right to vote and to follow the intent of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address?
Hi, I'm Dave Bicking from 3211 22nd Avenue South in Minneapolis. The Viking Stadium proposal is a very bad deal for the city and its residents. I'll focus on just one aspect. It's a part of the deal that would make it incredibly irresponsible for the city council to support this plan. Some context first. These are difficult times economically for most of us. The city budgets are in precarious condition throughout the country, and the future is uncertain. Part of today's crisis is the result of the collapse of the housing bubble. Now, there were many causes, but many people point to irresponsible mortgages as part of the problem. Some people bought houses they couldn't afford, but they could make the payment at first due to interest-only loans or initial lower loan payments, but soon the payments went up and they were in trouble. Now, the city is buying part of the Viking Stadium, and the financing plan is much more irresponsible than any of those mortgages. Because the half percent sales taxed and the downtown taxes are spoken for through 2020, the city doesn't make its first payment to pay down the bonds until 2021. That's like taking out a 30-year mortgage, but with five years of no principal payment and even five years of no interest payment. The principal just keeps building and building during those five years. That's much worse than an interest-only mortgage. It's totally irresponsible. Governments bond, sell bonds for many investments, but an essential characteristic of an investment is that you pay upfront with the benefits returning the cost over the future years, like buying an efficient furnace, and then you save on heating bills. But here, even the, the payments start over eight years from now. Even the benefits are upfront, the civic pride of a brand-new stadium, few years of construction jobs. The payments start eight years away. This is the exact opposite of an investment. Don't be that irresponsible. You may point to something flashy now, but from 2021 to 2045, the taxpayers will curse you, and so will the elected officials in that time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I wasn't sure of the order. My name is John Colstad. I'm the president of Mill City Music, and sometimes they call me the Papa. I want to thank-
Do you have your address, too, for the record?
I want to thank Councilmember Glidden for calling this hearing, and I also want to thank the five colleagues who have been supporting or at least been in opposition to this proposal. I'm not against a Viking Stadium. What I'm against is spending a dime of public money. The city has been devastated, and the nation has been devastated, and to spend more money on billionaires and bailouts is just unconscionable. This is a very bad deal for the people of Minneapolis. There's been manipulation of the process by those supposedly working on this deal for the people. This has been reprehensible. There've been secret meetings, closed-door sessions, secret documents only select supporters are allowed to see, sudden visits from the NFL, those monopoly executives, legal opinions that the mayor can ignore the city charter by a city attorney without any kind of written document, without any kind of citation. I question the ability of a lawyer like that. Maybe the city needs to look at hiring a new one. This is anti-democratic, and I'll tell you, folks, this stinks. This proposal has produced an excessive amount of abusive language, four-letter words. I heard it a lot today. So watch out, here it comes. The four-letter word is jobs. This will create jobs. We in the trades need jobs, honored by job creators. The job creators nationally, we've heard a lot about. And yes, we want to support the people. We all need jobs, and some of us in business actually need to have some business because that is our job, and I will tell you, there's not much there. All of this about jobs is actually a lie. The creators of jobs are the small businesses of America and Minnesota. More than 50% of all jobs in the United States are produced by small business. 90% of the new jobs in Minnesota are produced by small business. That makes Ziggy and the Vikings minorly compared to small business. So small business is actually big business in Minnesota. So what we need to do is to talk to the labor unions and saying, yes, we got to create jobs. Let's find a way to do that. Let's do it in a cost-effective way. I just want to end with the comment that we need to start taxing the rich, we need to end the wars, and we need to tell these sports billionaires to build your own business in your own building like I did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let's be respectful, please. It's next testifier, Ms. Worley, I think.
My name is Susan Worley. I live at 2111 13th Avenue South. I have the pleasure, I've had the pleasure of meeting several of you and have had the joy of participating in Minneapolis politics for several years. One of the things that I've noticed from people who move from out of state, especially from Michigan and Illinois and New York, they remarked how clean our politics are, how transparent, and how accountable our city's elected officials are to the people and to what we want. I've seen really strong support for the arts, for labor, for education, and I think that's all fantastic. On this bill, everything I thought I knew about city politics has been shown to be maybe naive, maybe I expected too much, maybe I have been telling everybody that we have a great city council that supports the people, but maybe not so much, at least not this time. And I feel like it sets an uncomfortable precedent. Using one city attorney to overturn a city charter in this manner does not seem to me like an ethical or transparent thing to do, and it doesn't seem like something I can be proud of or brag to my out-of-state friends about. So as you move forward and as you decide what kinds of jobs you're going to support, I would say support anything else besides the stadium, anything else. I've heard you have a great Minneapolis Riverfront proposal that will completely renovate a lot of the area around the Mississippi River. It'll create parks, it'll create lots of jobs, and it won't give billions, a billion dollars to a wealthy person. It will enrich our community, and it's something we can all be proud of, something we can brag to from our, to our out-of-state friends who look to us to guide their city's government as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read some more names. Joseph Smith or Smythe, Tom Goldstein, Rachel Mann, Janet Nye, and Carol Becker.
My name is Joseph Smith. I live at 1717 Northeast Washington. The other day, I had an appointment down at 60th and Nicollet, so I jumped on my bike to ride down there, and guess what? The bridge is out. And the Plymouth Bridge is out, and the Lowry Bridge is out, and the Sable Bridge is out. And the roads down in South Minneapolis, even important streets like Nicollet and Lindale are full of potholes, look like someone's been driving tanks over them. They could wreck a bike or damage a car. I do a lot of work with Habitat for Humanity. It's kind of my hobby over in the north. And the site super showed me the crime statistics for over the neighborhood where we work. According to the Minneapolis Police Department, in 90 days, North Minneapolis had 422 reported rapes, over 600 armed robberies, literally thousands of assaults and burglaries, a few murders, shots fired every night. The site supers don't like being there alone. It's, and with all of these things that the city, that is literally, that is city business, that the cities should- that the cities should be taken care of, you want to give $150 million to Ziggy Wilf for his private business? That's crazy. You took an oath on the Bible. Every one of you took an oath on the Bible to do the, to take care of the people of Minneapolis who pay your salaries. You didn't take no oath to Ziggy Wilf, at least I hope you didn't. Ziggy Wilf has more money than Minnesota and Hennepin County and Minneapolis put together. He can build his own stadium. If you want to put construction workers to work, great, but each, but these jobs are temporary. 14 weeks, $20,000 per tradesman. You could hire 20 tradesmen for what you're going to give Ziggy Wilf for each job he's going to create. Secondly, and the last thing I want to say is, I don't think we should submit to blackmail from Ziggy Wilf or anyone else. Good day.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, members, my name is Tom Goldstein. I live in St. Paul and I appreciate allowing me to come here and testify. I've been in touch with many of you. I've been in touch with all of you by email, so you're aware of the many points that I've made about the problems with the stadium. I just want to address the jobs number. Yes, jobs will create it, but as I've said many times and I hope for once the media would report it, it's not 7,500 jobs. It's 680 full-time job equivalents over three years. Yes, those are jobs, but it's not, the, the impression is that we're creating 7,500 full-time jobs and we are not. I think the reason we are really here is because the Vikings, people keep talking about the Vikings leaving. The Vikings are not going to leave and the dynamics of LA don't work because there's no stadium there for them. They're proposing to build a privately funding stadium in LA, which means all the revenues would have to go to pay for that stadium, which leaves no revenue for the Vikings. Similarly, there's no reason for anyone to buy the team to propose to move it there. That doesn't seem to convince people because what I hear is, well, I still think they might move. Okay, they might move. So what's the solution? Is it an expansion of gambling with this is the priority, which is what is proposed at the state? Or is it the job of the business community, which is the one that time and again extols the virtues of having a team here that should be responsible? I would argue this is not your problem. This is the problem of the business community and those who benefit and the Vikings. The Vikings have not put as much money on the table as they can because they don't want to. Can you blame them? They will not if they are not pushed. The top, the Fortune 500, the 20 Fortune 500 companies in Minnesota, $439 billion in revenues last year. One half, less than one quarter of 1% would pay for the stadium. If the business community in this town, in this state, is not willing to save this valuable asset, then they can't be very important. Somehow they would like to hoodwink you into thinking this is a problem for the taxpayers and for gamblers and a whole host of other people, but not them. And they will testify time and again how important it is and how they bring people here, but they will not put their money where their mouth is and they need to. And if you're against this, people need to get to the legislature and let them know there as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Mann. I live at 3437 31st Avenue South. First, I just want to say that I, I haven't given up in government. That's why I'm here. I'm not, I don't know much about football. I didn't grow up in Minnesota. I am a scientist and so what I want to talk about is, I guess, I didn't grow up here, but I went to school here to get my degree at the University of Minnesota and I decided to live here because I felt like people in the state really cared about things like the environment. I rode here from my home on my bike on some bike paths that you all paid for. Thank you. And as I rode past the Metrodome, I looked at it and I thought, gosh, that's a lot of concrete. And I'm wondering what landfill that's going to go in when we build a new stadium, like so many people want to do. And the other thing that nobody's been able to explain to me yet is how rehabbing all of the concrete that's already there, that, that foundation couldn't produce just as good a stadium and just as many jobs as building a new one. I mean, the people of Minnesota value the environment. They want to do things green. The city has a reputation for that. I don't know if Mr. Wilf shares that value. I don't know him, but maybe somebody could ask him. But I would like you all to consider that as you think about these proposals. I don't know all the details in them, but it seems like it would make a lot more sense to see what we can do with what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Nye, Carol Becker, either one.
My name's Carol Becker, 3201 48th Avenue South in Mighty Long fellow neighborhood. Want to talk about four points today. My first point is to my union brothers and sisters. I've been in a union for over 20 years. I've also been laid off recently and I understand what that's like. I understand what it's like when you don't know whether or not you're going to be able to feed your kids. I got a kid, she's five, little curly hair, red hair, gorgeous kid. The question is though, whether or not this is a great way to do, to produce jobs. And if you do the numbers, I hadn't seen the 680 number. My understanding is that 4.2 million hours divided that by 2080, which is a year's worth of work. If I divide that by a billion dollars, I am paying 1.4 million dollars per full-time job. How many of my union friends, how many are going to see that kind of money? Anybody? You're not. If I take the 7,500 part and full-time jobs, divide that by a billion dollars, that's $130,000 per job. How many of us are going to see that in our paychecks? You guys know what you're getting paid, right? You know what you're getting paid. There are better ways to invest this money and would put more money in your pocket. If we were fixing the schools, if we were fixing the parks, more of that money would be in your pocket. Is this the only deal out there?
Miss Becker, if you could turn this way just so that I can see.
No. I apologize. I have to speak also to them. There are better ways to get you guys working than this. This is not the best way. It doesn't put the most money in your pocket. The second thing I wanted to say is that there's been a lot of misconceptions going on. If we do nothing, if we do nothing, $20 million comes to us that we can use for tax relief. For someone who stood here in December and explaining my taxes have gone up 100% since 2003, adjusted for inflation, that's big money. Third thing I want to speak about is that the lack of democratic process, especially with the attorney's opinions. I would speak to the city attorney on this, that staff have a responsibility to nurture democracy. And if we don't know what is going on, then that hurts democracy fundamentally. And this idea that it isn't a city sales tax, it is called in law a local option sales tax. There's the uniformity clause. I'm not an attorney. So it would be very helpful to us as citizens to understand these issues if things were put down in writing. And that really hurts democracy when it doesn't happen. Anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Janet Nye and then Annette Rondano and Dan Ditman.
Hi, my name is Janet Nye. I live 2112 Portland Avenue South in Minneapolis and it's tough to follow the big guns. They have pretty much covered the process. They have the numbers and they've crunched them and that, in my opinion, is what we need to do. We need to have those numbers in front of us to make a good decision and I don't think we've, we've had that clear process with, you know, from our government. At any rate, I, you know, I used to be okay with having a Vikings stadium here as long as it was paid for by Mr. Wilf. But now I, I look at the NFL and I look at the process that's gone on and I, and I just, I don't want these people in my town. The world of pro and college football isn't faring very well these days. The Vikings themselves have the worst record for getting into trouble off the field in the NFL. And recently, there was a scandal about a coach from another team bringing players, bribing players to injure key players on other teams. Then there was the horrifying Penn State scandal regarding pedophilia. I can't really look upon the world of football as a very good model for young people. During this scurrilous process of some officials trying to foist this huge burden on the taxpayers, I've gone from being okay with a stadium if it has no taxpayer involvement to not wanting a Vikings team here at all. And I realize that, you know, Mr. Wilf, this, this has been going on in, you know, major cities all over the United States, this kind of activity. There's, there's a website called Field of, or, you know, a blog called A Field of Schemes that talks about this. I want this to stop in Minneapolis. I just want it to, I want us to be the ones to stop it. But we can't do it without democracy here in Minneapolis and I will hold your feet to the fire about that. We deserve a vote. It's a law. And let's start practicing real democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annette Rondano. I live at 4217 45th Avenue South and I am standing before the hardest-working people in the city of Minneapolis. I want you to know that I have so much respect for the city council. I know that the work that you do is really, really hard. I'm here because I want you to know that I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. We have a perfectly good stadium and that stadium needs to be used. We could use that stadium for a long, long time. I also rode by it on my bike. It's a lot of concrete. I was at the University of Minnesota when they tore down the Memorial Stadium. I was working in the solid waste department there. They took that building down brick by brick and they did it because those of us in the solid waste department said, hello, this is resources. How many hills have already been stripped so that we have the stadium that we've already paid for? How many marshes have already been dug out so that we can have the stadium that we already have? How many trees have we already taken down for that stadium? I just bought a, a piece of wood for my business in, in St. Paul. That piece of wood cost me $120 and it's not that big. And the reason why is because trees are becoming scarce. We owe it to the earth to take care of the stadium that we have. Now, every single one of you has given our tax dollars to, excuse me, this is really stressful. You've set aside tens of thousands of dollars for the Climate Action Plan. I was at that Climate Action Plan kickoff. Mayor RT Ryback was so compelling. Everything about it was compelling. But what are we doing when we are spending tens of thousands of dollars to try to research something that we already know about? We already know the problem. The problem is, is that we think that a stadium is like a shirt, that we're going to get a new one because we've got a new, like somehow there's a new style. You know what? It's a stadium. It's a lot of resources. And I'm really calling you to think about that. I really, really, really call on you to think about it and thank you again for everything you do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dan Ditman, 3729 Snelling Avenue South. To be short, sweet and concise, no, I will not support another publicly-funded stadium. To say that this will, is necessary for jobs is baloney. There, there are plenty of construction projects all over the state that can be done without, that can be done with public funds that will benefit the public. I will highlight a couple of examples. For example, in Southern Minnesota, there is a stretch of highway, US Highway 14. Currently, the Minnesota Department of Transit, obviously this is outside of your jurisdiction, but you know, it still goes to the whole jobs argument. There's a stretch of Minnesota, or US Highway 14. Dayton doesn't know where to get the funding for it from and he's just kind of tossed it to the side. There is a bridge in Winona, US Highway, or excuse me, Minnesota Highway 43, which crosses into Wisconsin. That bridge needs to be redone. It's on the schedule for being rebuilt, but maybe we could accelerate that. There's a bridge in Hastings. Obviously, that one's under construction. You know, there, there are basically bridges all over the state that can be reworked. I believe a full third of our bridges in Minnesota are structurally deficient. Many of those are in rural areas. Here in the metro area, we're a little bit, I guess, in good shape, but that's because we've been getting all the money. But there is money that can be spread around the rest of the state. Again, this is outside of your jurisdiction, but something to keep in mind when it comes to jobs. There, there is work that can be done. It's just not necessarily here.
Well, thank you very much. We have come to the end of time for testimony. I don't think we have time for another speaker and I will say, I think we got to almost everyone on this list. It was amazing and so I thank you for your patience. I apologize if there was somebody here who did not get a chance to testify in person, but again, we will take your written comments if you wish to submit them. So, we will now turn to the business part of our meeting and I will call on Councilmember, Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for conducting such a respectful public hearing. And thanks to everybody that spoke and I really want to thank everybody that came down. It was, it was very compelling testimony on both sides. I'm going to pass out a resolution that I will move that is a resolution that essentially outlines the deal, the deal of our, our proposal for a People's Stadium and the reasons to support this action. And the action that we're asking for is to place support for the People's Stadium on the city's legislative agenda. It talks about repurposing our sales taxes that are, are existing hospitality taxes and it makes it clear that Target Center is an essential part of our agreement. It talks about what we would do with our money, which is support the People's Stadium, make capital improvements to Target Center, the ability to use our taxes that are currently tied up with the Convention Center to support Target Center debt service and operating expenses and then also other capital and economic development investments in our city. It details exactly what our, the stadium does for us at this point. It will host 10 Vikings games a year, but also the 600 other events that you, during the year that happened, happens there, including college and high school sports, inline skating, dog days. We also reiterate our support from our 2003 resolution, which identified the Metrodome as the preferred site for a stadium because of its accessibility to the state and regional transportation infrastructure, the support for the jobs component that's involved in, in our stadium. And so I'm, I'm asking my colleagues for support on this and I really appreciate the, all the input that's gone into this and the public discussion is a very, very helpful discussion. And I go back to what is, has been my thought about this all along. We have a city that is a wonderful city and people come to our city for many different reasons. It is a place where people come to for entertainment and the entertainment is in many, many different categories. You know, if you look in our city, people come to go to the theaters. People come to see dance in our community. They come to Orchestra Hall. They come to the Guthrie Theater. They come to the McPhail Center. Those are all facilities that have been supported by public investments. People come to our community for medical care. They come to our wonderful children's hospitals. We've just had two children's hospitals in our community have expansions of the facilities that treat people from all over the state as well as other states that come for our marvelous facilities. Those facilities were supported by public action. The city of Minneapolis sold bonds, used our credit rating to get lower financing costs for those facilities. And we do it because we are an important city. We are the economic engine of this region. And so that is why I'm supportive of the Vikings staying in Minneapolis. We have to keep this essential business that, you know, Meet Minneapolis will tell you the value of turning on a TV set across the United States of America on a Monday night and seeing an overhead shot of our city, the beauty that our city shows, the nation. It makes people decide to come and visit here. It makes people come and decide to work here. Those things have value. And so the NFL, and yes, nobody loves the financing mechanisms for professional sports, but we benefit from that exposure that the NFL gives us in a broader, in a broader sense. So I, I hope people look at the resolution, consider what it means. We, you know, had an update about the, the mechanics of where the bill is now. That will change before the legis, nothing, nothing is set in concrete until the legislature votes on that. And so there are some things that we like about what's on the table at the legislature right now, some things that we don't like. But we'll have to vote on the, on the final proposal and the details of that need to match what this resolution says. So I ask my colleagues to consider this and ask for your support.
Council President Johnson has moved the resolution that we have in front of us. Discussion on that motion.
Could I ask a point of order, please? Is the council chair requesting people to vote in violation of the city charter?
Sir, we're going- Sir, we're going to ask you respectfully to please sit down and let us do our business.
I really have time to be respectful, and I want you to also be respectful of the city charter, but I don't know...
This is not the time for the public to speak. This is a time for us to do our business, or I will have to call and ask for you to leave this room. Please, sir.
Is this an official vote in violation of the city charter?
Sir, I have asked you several times respectfully. Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to share some information first, and then I have an amendment that I would like to move to Councilmember Johnson's resolution. And the first thing is some information that I gathered working with Chuck Lutz, Deputy Director of CPAD, and Patrick Todd from the City Assessor's Office, and it should be being passed down with you right now. It's kind of one of the... Well, I think information is really valuable, and it's been difficult to get accurate information. And one of the things that was brought up was the ramifications of the property taxes. And so with the help of our excellent staff, we went through and we looked at the properties that would go tax-exempt in the new stadium area. And this is a... It's a nice spreadsheet because it demonstrates where those taxes would go or where they come from. If you look at this, you'll look at the total property taxes that are paid from these properties that would go tax-exempt equals $476,626.19, and that's in today's dollars. That, of course, gets divided to the state, to fiscal disparities, to the city, to the county, to the school district, and to other jurisdictions. So the city's impact is really only $109,000 a year. Nevertheless, I think what the property taxpayers should know is that half a million will be coming off a year from property taxes, and that will have to be paid for by somebody unless we lower the levies. So I just think that's some information we should think about, and somehow it's something that didn't get counted in the contribution. So actually, the county's making a contribution here. The school board's making a contribution. The state's making an additional contribution because we're taking property off. So that, I just want to get out there, and I would request that that could be linked to our agenda. I think that would be good information to have out there. And since I still have some time, I also want to make a motion to amend the council president's resolution, which does talk about our legislative agenda. And one of the things... I'm not supportive of the present deal, but one of the things that I think is crucial for us is that we do try to honor the charter and get it out for a vote. And I think I would like this amendment added to the resolution, and I'll read it for everybody. It's pretty brief. So this is to amend the 2012 legislative agenda as follows. In the municipal governance, Minneapolis opposes on page nine, add the following statement: Legislation that includes any section or provision that stipulates that the city of Minneapolis charter limitations or provisions related to the financing of professional sports facilities or stadiums do not apply.
Second.
I think this is especially relevant because we have a House version that doesn't have this in there. So it's leaving our charter intact, and we have a Senate version that leaves it in there. And I think it's important for us to weigh in. Do we really want to ask the state legislature to override the charter, or don't we?
And we are in speaker management, and Councilmember Gordon has moved his amendment. We're taking discussion on that amendment. Councilmembership.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everybody who came today to speak today on both sides of the issue. I support this motion by Councilmember Gordon because it simply reflects existing law in the city of Minneapolis, existing law that was passed by the city voters, not by the city council. And I'm confused by the fourth clause in the resolution before us by Councilmember Johnson that states, "The proposal for a People's Stadium does not involve an override of the 1997 Charter referendum limiting city public financing of sports facilities." And the reasons I'm concerned and confused about that is because of the statement that appears in both the House and the Senate file titled Section 4, Charter Limitations Not to Apply. Since both bills include sections that say that charter doesn't apply, I don't know how we could pass a statement that says these bills do not override our charter. It's in the bill. It's very clear. It's line 43.27. I've emailed it to everybody on the council, and it states, "Any amounts expended indebtedness or obligations incurred, including but not limited to the issuance of bonds or actions taken by the city under this article, are not deemed an expenditure." And it goes on. So I don't know how you can issue bonds and not declare that an expenditure, but it's very clear that both the House file and the Senate file have a section titled Charter Limitations Not to Apply. Therefore, the legislation does override our city charter.
Councilmember Liligren.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd also like to thank everyone that came down and for the respectful dialogue that we're having here. I intend to support Councilmember Gordon's motion, and although I do have other objections around the stadium proposal, for me, this charter piece is sort of the core of my concerns. I have concerns about the financing package and that the public sector absorbs the risk. I think that's a huge concern. I have concern that I don't understand clearly what the default revenues will be if any of these proposed revenue streams underperform. I have concerns representing a part of the city that has considerable need, that we would put this expenditure before other needs. But for me, it's this charter piece. And in 1997, the voters of the city of Minneapolis, the same voters that put us in these seats ourselves here, felt strongly enough about this issue that they voted, and they were very clear. They want a voice in a stadium or public facility expenditure over $10 million. And if this is such a great idea, and many people here think it is, and they were very good about expressing their reasons for thinking it was a good idea, then the voters will see that it's a good idea and that it's a good deal for the people of the city of Minneapolis. So I don't think we should be moving on any kind of stadium expenditures without going to the voters, as they directed us through their actions in 1997. So I am very supportive of the Gordon amendment tonight.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would urge my colleagues not to support this motion, and I will explain that this language, and Ms. Segal can correct me if I'm wrong, but this particular language in both bills, and it does exist, is essentially the Target Center language. And this does not address the Vikings, the portion of the proposal that is the Vikings stadium.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I actually think it would address both of them. With this part in the bill, it would make any ruling of our city attorney or any lawsuit that would come forward moot because we would already be exempted from it. But Council President Johnson raises an interesting point because it also would allow us to spend $10 million or more on any future sports facility or stadium enterprise that we wanted to, including the Target Center. It would basically lift it out that as long as we were relying on the sales taxes that we are collecting. So I think that is an interesting and it's an important point, and so I think it's even more important that we look at that. At least, if this went through without this, we'd have the opportunity to weigh in on future investments in sports facilities, including the Target Center.
Any further discussion... Excuse me. Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none. I think just because some of these votes may be close that I will ask for the roll call. So turn to the clerk.
Councilmember Hodges.
Aye.
Samuels.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
Hofstadter.
No.
Schiff.
Aye.
Kovenroy.
No.
Tuthill.
No.
Quincy.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Liligren.
Aye.
Giddon.
Aye.
There's six ayes and seven ahs.
So that fails, and we are back to Council President Johnson's original motion, which is a resolution which is in front of us. Any further discussion on this resolution? Councilmembership.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of my concerns about the bill, and they include many, but one of them is that currently the city has the share of the appointments on the Metropolitan Sports Facilities Commission. I understand that is going away into a new Minnesota Stadium Authority, and I think since the public financing under this bill is shared between the state and the city, we should each enjoy equal appointments to that commission. So my motion is simply to add a new section to the Johnson Amendment Resolution that says the Minnesota Stadium Authority should be comprised of three appointments by the governor and three appointments by the mayor and city council. We're giving up significant control even with this resolution, since we have the vast majority of appointments today, but I think at the very least, we should not give up control on the board, since we are partners with the state and contributing half of the financing of public tax dollars.
All right. Councilmember Schiff has moved an amendment to the resolution in front of us. Any discussion on this amendment? Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would encourage my colleagues not to support this, and I would point out that this is part of a negotiation that produced an agreement to move forward with the People's Stadium, negotiated on behalf of the state and the city. The reason that we have the appointments on the Sports Facilities Commission at this point is because we have funded completely the construction of the Metrodome, the taxpayers of the city of Minneapolis. And yes, of course, we have the appointments. The governor has the chairmanship appointment, but Minneapolis residents paid for the Metrodome, and we are in a different situation now and are a partner with the state of Minnesota. That's one of the pluses. If you think along the history of sports facilities in this state, this is the very first time that the state of Minnesota has ever put money on the table of this significance to support professional sports in this state. They benefit the most, and they haven't put a nickel on the table until this point. So I'm willing to give them a seat at the table and say, "Yes, I want this facility built in my city," but we're going to have to give a little because we're not the sole funder. And so I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to speak in favor of this amendment. I think it does in part go to the issue of the last amendment, which is whether or not one believes or one feels that the dollars the city is putting into the People's Stadium, as it's being called, are actually the city dollars. And since I actually do believe they're the city dollars and that they should be subject to our charter, that means that the city is putting in a significant amount of money into this stadium proposal, and I think that it is justified that we would ask for equal time and equal space at the table. I would also note that this is the first opportunity for the city to actually weigh in on this proposal. There have been a number of folks who've been talking about it. The negotiations have been happening without the imprimatur of the city council, and I imagine they will now continue with the imprimatur of the city council if the votes go the way they're expected. But at this stage of the game, this is our first chance to actually weigh in on what we think, and I think that this is fair game. I have not negotiated the bill that's in the House or Senate, and if I had, I would have asked for this.
Councilmember Gordon.
I'm also going to support this. I think we absolutely should be coming back, asking for more, asking for more from the bill, from the state, from the Vikings. This is our only chance to weigh in, and if this is one little thing that we can get in there to say, "Let's make sure that we get some more benefits to Minneapolis," or at least have a little bit more oversight in it, I think we should ask for that. Clearly, we're not united on this. I'd be surprised that we couldn't at least reach a larger majority over some of these issues, and it would be disappointing if we were stuck in a 7-6 vote over something as minor as this.
Further discussion on this amendment? Further discussion seen? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to amplify first Council President Johnson's point that this is part of a negotiation that we were able to successfully get the state finally to step up and do more. There's also another important issue here, is that cost overruns on this project go to the state, not to the city of Minneapolis. That was critically important to us. These two issues are tied together. We don't want to be controlling the cost overruns, and so in return, we said they could have the majority on that. I would much rather have them paying more and have the cost overruns and have a majority on that. Now, in addition to that, what we said is that the pieces of this that were most important for us were the oversight of the land use issues. That's where we are most involved on that, so we had special involvement on that. But, folks, this is a lot about saying that you get the appointments if you get the cost, and we were able to negotiate a better deal for the city of Minneapolis than we had for the Metrodome because in part of this provision.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Hodges.
Aye.
Samuels.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
Hofstadter.
No.
Schiff.
Aye.
Kovenroy.
No.
Tuthill.
No.
Quincy.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Liligren.
Aye.
Giddon.
Aye.
There's six ayes, seven ahs.
We are back to Council President Johnson's resolution, and I cannot remember... I think Councilmember Schiff has already taken that speech. Councilmember Liligren. So is there any further discussion on the resolution? Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, we'd just like to speak down a little bit. Also, after this, I have another motion that I'd like to make, but I think I'd like to let us vote on this resolution first because I don't think it's necessarily an amendment to it. But one of the things that I just wanted to highlight that disturbs me most about this proposal or this deal is how much potential revenue is actually going to be diverting away from other things that could be invested in. Interesting to note, the original statute that governs our sales tax, convention tax, entertainment hospitality tax has no sunset clause in it whatsoever. It was actually recently amended in 2008 and 2009 to stipulate that if there's any extra revenue after we're paying off the Convention Center debt, that could go to economic development throughout the city. Some of us on the council realized, "Well, this is our opportunity to actually fund CPAD and the economic development projects that we need to do for the future, on into the future, and actually help create those jobs that we do on into the future by investing some of this money." Sure, if we didn't need all of it, we could reduce some of the taxes in the sales tax or hospitality tax, as we've already... People have talked about here, because we all may recall. At least, I recall reading an article that said downtown Minneapolis was the highest taxed downtown area of cities its size in the country. So clearly, there's room to bring it down. But also, the way things are written, there was room to actually have some revenue so that we could already, in the statute, be paying the Target Center if we had the funds available. That was clearly in there, and do economic development in the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, what this is going to do is tie up all the money into the Convention Center, into the Target Center, and into the Vikings stadium, and there won't be excess revenues to do that. But then, lo and behold, when I actually read the bill, I realized now they've put in a sunset clause. So even after we've paid that off now, they'll will now, for the first time ever, automatically turn off, and we won't have those sales taxes even if we can hold out to 2045 and we're still around to think about how we can invest them. So I'm not going to be supporting the resolution. It's not because I don't support the Metrodome site. I do. It's not because I don't want the Vikings to be in Minneapolis, and they're a major contributor to downtown. It's not that I wouldn't even support a renovated Metrodome stadium. And I think it was great that we heard somebody from the Target Center highlight in the testimony today how much they're saving by renovating the Target Center rather than building a new one. Why aren't we focusing that? How much could we actually save by making it a state-of-the-art Metrodome right where it is, out of the current building? I think we could save millions and millions, and I don't know why that isn't part of the deal, and we could add to it. And I'm not voting against it because I don't want to have... I'm not voting for it because I don't want to have jobs in the city, and I think we can, and we can invest, and we can invest that money. And as I've talked about, we can even invest the same sales taxes in those jobs into the future if we had them. I think there's a way to do that and probably even get a stadium built. It's unfortunate somehow that this is coming up to this session, this time of year, when it seems like the legislature is unwilling to do what's... it seems like the legislature is unwilling to do what's most reasonable and practical would be to determine this is a worthwhile investment, let's actually raise a little bit of taxes statewide or region-wide so we could pay for it. Instead, they have decided that what they have to do is pit locality against locality, just like football teams and other professional sports teams has done to cities against city throughout the country, only this time, we have Ramsey County bidding for it, Shakopee, and let's see who can make the most offer and pay the biggest price for their residents in their city. And I don't think we should fall into that, and I'm not willing to vote for a bill that has us do that. And I'm disappointed that I don't think I'll be on the prevailing side of this.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Councilmember Tuthill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question to ask her for some clarification, if I could. Councilmember Gordon, in the two years that I've been down here, all I have heard is that these taxes are going to sunset. The sales tax from the convention center and the other hospitality taxes are going to sunset, and that last year, when the IGA group was over at the legislature, that the legislature at that time was threatening to take them away from us. Now, somehow, I'm getting kind of mixed messages here, and I would really like some clarification, and I'm happy to take that clarification from anyone on the council that can explain that to me, please.
If I could, Madam Chair. Was that a question clarifying for me?
I think that was essentially a point of order, even though it was expressed as a question to you, Councilmember Gordon, and I was just looking to see if Mr., who are you pointing to?
Riney is, I don't believe Mr. Riney is, oh, he is here.
Mr. Riney, there you are. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, members.
The most recent drafts of both the House and the Senate bill have sunsets on the sales and use tax and the hospitality taxes, December 31, 1940, not 2046, or January 1, 2047.
And I believe Councilmember Tuthill's question, though, was, prior to these current bills, what was the status on the, whether there was a sunset?
Madam Chair, unlike most other local sales taxes, there was no sunset on our local tax. There was, however, many threats and discussions, and even a bill was introduced this year that would have had a sunset in 2020. And that was, and there was actually a hearing in the House Tax Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Riney. Councilmember Tuthill? Okay. Councilmember Schiff.
Thank you. I have a question for our finance staff. Can you tell us what is the total contribution from the city of Minneapolis over the 30-year life of the bonds for this proposal?
Mr. Carpenter.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, assuming that there's a 2% growth rate in the taxes, the base case scenario, over the course of 2021 through 2046, the state will retain approximately $675 million from this suite of taxes to fund the contributions to the stadium.
$675 million?
Correct.
So that would be the total amount taken from Minneapolis, downtown Minneapolis, as well as the citywide sales tax that we impose on everybody who eats, drinks, and stays in downtown Minneapolis?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, that is correct. The state will retain of the approximately $2.1 billion generated in those sales taxes, $675 million for the stadium.
Thank you very much. I think that's the first time publicly that dollar figure has ever been released. All the spreadsheets I've been given so far have to be determined in the total column, so I appreciate hearing that number.
Councilmember Schiff, you still have time?
Sure.
Otherwise, we are.
I just want to enter into the record. The emails that my office has received, so that they may be available through the clerk's office, have received substantial emails in favor of the stadium proposal, and this is the stack of emails that I've received in opposition to the stadium proposal. And to save paper, my staff double-sided each email. So each sheet of paper represents the opinions of two people, and I will pass these down to the clerk so they can be made part of the public record. I can't support this resolution today. Had Councilmember Gordon's motion passed earlier, I would have been more drawn to entertaining it, but particularly Clause 4 that says, "This bill does not involve an override of the charter referendum," is clearly false. There is a section in the bill that specifically says charter limitations shall not apply. And I do appreciate the language in the resolution that says the Vikings are a statewide asset. And for me, that's what this comes down to. A statewide asset, I believe, should be funded through statewide means and not through just one neighborhood, as Councilmember Gordon referenced, the most heavily taxed neighborhood in the country. I don't think that's proportionate to the benefits that we receive. I appreciate the numbers and the need for jobs. I represent a district with one of the highest unemployment rates in the city of Minneapolis, and I appreciate that 7,500 Minnesotans would be put to work through the construction of a new stadium. However, with the financing package as it stands today, that's a subsidy from the city of Minneapolis of over $80,000 per job. Now, I didn't calculate with that new number, 675 million, so it's much higher than that, but someone else can calculate how much we're subsidizing per job. Never before has the city of Minneapolis felt so desperate as to subsidize jobs at so high a rate. And in all of our economic development deals, Councilmember Goodman does an impeccable job on the Community Development Committee, looking at the ratio of public dollars to private dollars, the number of jobs being created, the number of affordable housing units being created, whatever the issue is. And I've never seen a ratio this poor before, a subsidy of over $80,000 per job. And I just think that we can do better. I think the legislature is best positioned to vote down this bill and to reconsider it after this election, and to consider statewide sources that have been proposed by St. Paul Mayor Chris Quelman and many others. That would be a more fair, more equitable way of financing a stadium, and it wouldn't involve overriding the Minneapolis Charter and the rights of Minneapolis voters to have their say.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Tuthill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another question that I have, and I think that Councilmember Schiff could probably answer it for me. Councilmember Schiff, when you did the math on this, at $80,000 per job subsidy from the Minneapolis taxpayers, did you take into account the building materials and the other things that are used, or is that, was that taken off the top and then figured $80,000 per job? I'm just curious, because this is the first I've heard of this. Thank you.
I will take that as a rhetorical comment, and I think we can. We typically do not address questions back and forth to councilmembers, so Councilmember Tuthill, if Councilmember Schiff wants to get in queue and answer that question, I will take that as a rhetorical comment that we can take. And Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to make two comments. One is related to the sunset. Indeed, there was never a sunset, as we had clarified here. Certainly, there has been fear that in 2020, that somebody might decide to, and of course, the state can do that with our taxes, sales tax and the taxing authority that they give us to impose at any time. But they didn't, and actually, when it was proposed at a committee, it failed. So they didn't even want to do it when it got proposed and brought up forward. It's kind of, I think, theatrically, just at the beginning of this whole negotiations. The other point I wanted to make, not to get too obsessed in harping on my points, but when we heard from the finance director on the $675 million that didn't include the $106,000 a year in city property taxes that we'll be losing, or that half a million a year that we'll be losing for all the jurisdictions that collect it, so that's another cost that you could multiply out for the full duration of it.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. I think it's for Mr. Riney. And the question we heard before, I think, was about the XL Center, and I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly. Is the Target Center, our capacity to fund the Target Center in either the House or the Senate bill?
Madam Chair, I didn't hear the question.
Is the Target Center, is our capacity to, is the proposal regarding the Target Center, is that in either the House or the Senate bill?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Hodges, it's in the Senate bill. It's not specific. There's authority to do it in both the Senate bill and in the House bill. There is not the authority, there's, since there is not a charter override, it makes it difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any further discussion from councilmembers, and so we are back to the vote on the resolution moved by Council President Johnson, and I will ask clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Hodges?
No.
Samuels?
Aye.
Gordon?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Schiff?
No.
Colvinroy?
Aye.
Tuthill?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Goodman?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lilligrin?
No.
Glidden?
No.
There are seven ayes, six nays.
And Councilmember Gordon, I believe, has what I think is our last motion. There is, Councilmember Gordon, I'll turn it over to you. This appears to me almost like a direction, but, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is actually a request. I believe that's the way the Charter Commission likes to get things from the council. This is a motion to request that the Charter Commission review the stadium financing bill to determine if the proposal for funding a Viking stadium complies with the Minneapolis City Charter, and if it requires a referendum, as stipulated in the charter, in the following sections. That's the motion, but on your sheet there, the sections are actually quoted, because I think it's important we remember there are two sections that deal with funding of stadiums or sports facilities. There's Section 9, which includes to incur indebtedness for municipal purposes on request of the council, and that stipulates that if we are going to invest $15 million in a public project, including stadiums, that has to be put to a referendum. Interestingly enough, that was passed in 1973. And then there's the Section 13, that I think people are more familiar with, that was passed in 97, that has to do with putting professional sports facilities financing before the voters if they're going to use city resources, including sales taxes, in excess of $10 million for financing of professional sports facilities. I think it would really be useful to have the Charter Commission kind of look into both of these and make a determination about if they apply according to the financing bill, and I'd appreciate your support, so we could at least get a second look there.
Okay. And as we are in committee, I don't believe that we need seconds on motions. Councilmember Goodman, discussion on the motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I don't think a vote is required on this, although I'm happy to ask for a roll call vote. Any individual citizen in the city of Minneapolis can make a request of the Charter Commission. That's happening right now, where there's a proposal for a two-year term, not a four-year term, where there's a proposal for five councilmembers, not 13 councilmembers. Any individual in the city can make a request of the Charter Commission. So I would thank Councilmember Gordon for bringing this forward. I certainly will vote for it, and I suppose anyone who does can sign a letter authored by Councilmember Gordon to make an immediate request of the Charter Commission. So as far as I'm concerned, this is a win-win. Vote for it or not, we're asking the Charter Commission to take a position on this.
Okay. Councilmember Lilligrin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I intend to support Councilmember Gordon's motion. Thanks for bringing it forward. And Councilmember Goodman, thanks for weighing in. And although it is true that any citizen resident of the city of Minneapolis can make a request to the Charter Commission, I think it's important for the city council to go on record supporting this request. I think since we have a Charter Commission, and they spend a tremendous amount of time becoming very expert in the charter and its workings, we have this resident body that's charged with minding our charter, with caring for our charter, with deliberating about amendments to our charter in a thoughtful way, I think we should ask them for their opinion on this. And there's been a lot of discussion, I think a lot of, a great lack of clarity around this issue. And I, for one, as a policymaker in this city, would benefit, feel I would really benefit from hearing the Charter Commission's opinion on this. So I intend to support Councilmember Gordon's motion, and I would ask my colleagues to do the same. Thanks.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just ask of Ms. Siegel, what sort of, does the Charter Commission issue an opinion? What would be the potential outcome of a request to the Charter Commission like this?
Madam Chair and Council President Johnson, I was just reviewing the charter provisions. I haven't had a chance to actually look at it. I think it is possible that that is not within their jurisdiction necessarily. I think they could probably entertain the discussion and, you know, give their personal opinions on it. I would need to sit down and review the actual charter language before I could give an opinion on that.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion by Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Colvinroy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My own thought was, I don't recall questions going to the Charter Commission for their interpretation of the law. And the questions that Councilmember Goodman brought, or referenced in her comments, that are being brought to the Charter Commission right now are not for their interpretation of the law. It's for, it's requesting them to look at bringing a potential change to the charter. So I'm certain that Councilmember Goodman is correct when she states that any person in Minneapolis can bring a question there. But this one is for an interpretation of the law, where we normally do turn to attorneys rather than the Charter Commission.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I would just point out that often the Charter Commission looks at the issues of the charter and makes decisions about them, and they make opinions about the charter, which is the city compact and the city law, so I don't know why that would be a concern. And the charter actually will work in consultation with the city attorney's office and others. They've actually hired outside counsel to help them develop an entire redraft of the city charter. So this is something totally in their bailiwick and something that they do normally. Earlier, I actually asked myself and a couple other councilmembers, went independently a few, a couple years ago, and asked them to look at the redistricting process in the charter and what alternatives there might be for that. So I don't think this is anything unusual or something that they shouldn't look at. In fact, I think they absolutely should look at it, so I hope we can support to get them to review it. I actually think that they're very involved also in getting issues on the ballot in the first place, so they would have to review this to even make that determination.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would urge my colleagues to not support this. And I think Councilmember Goodman, if she's correct, and it sounds like she is, anybody can make this request of the Charter Commission. The question is, what powers does the Charter Commission have aside from expressing an opinion? And I think that's, the answer to that is expressing an opinion. Now, having said that, I just want to clarify, we have not had, this Charter Commission did not hire an attorney, outside attorney, to look at the redo of the Plain Language Charter. The attorney was a member of the Charter Commission, and he helped direct that work. The city attorney provides legal services or legal help to the Charter Commission, so they would be asking the city attorney for what their powers are in this. So I would urge my colleagues not to support this.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I am going to support this. I think even if the determination of the Charter Commission is not legally binding, they are a group of people who are intimately acquainted with our charter, and their opinion would matter and would weigh with me and other folks, and they can also ask the attorney who works with them to opine on the question as well. I will say on the Plain Language Charter that indeed the bulk of the work was done by a member of that commission, but we, as a city, did hire an outside contractor as well to take a look at it a few times. There was a number of back and forth, and we can, and so I just wanted to make sure folks knew that.
All right. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Samuels?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
No.
Schiff?
Aye.
Colvinroy?
No.
Tuthill?
No.
Quincy?
No.
Goodman?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Lilligrin?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
There are seven ayes, six nays.
All right. That is approved. And I believe we have finished, concluded with the business before us. Then, I would just like to say one more time that Then, I would just like to say one more time that the record, as I announced earlier, will remain open to written testimony until the close of business tomorrow, April 25, at 5:00 p.m., for those who weren't able to testify, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you all so very much.